All right, the hour being after seven, April 30, we have a full board. First item of business, minutes of March 6th. Make a motion to accept.
I have one more thing, just gonna work out with Kate. Jay, I talked to her before the meeting.
On March 6th?
On March 6th.
Okay. All right, make a motion March 20th?
Second.
Your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
All right. So, uh... We can't go, we got a little bit here. All right, we'll do the Kiasage on Nostrate. Yeah, yeah, sure, Kyle. Did, uh... Does anybody... Did anybody cop... Did you make copies of that? Oh, Barry's thing?
No, I just gave it to you. Did you get it?
Yeah. Yeah, I asked to make it for the whole time.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
All right. Well, just for a discussion here is when we approved the one on, uh, Nostrate for Kiasage, one of the things is the deputy chief at the time, Paul Barry, wanted paving. And we incorporated his comments into our decision. But for some reason, they never made it onto the plan. So, I have to tell him, put it on. I don't know why, but it should've been on there.
And they got signed without the comments?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, John. They were supposed to put it on. I mean, our signing doesn't relieve them of anything, so... Just want to let everybody know, because the other one didn't have it, and I'm surprised they didn't look at that one. So that's how this all came about, so... What is here tonight, we'll mention to him, he's gonna have to redo them.
As the gentleman from...
Yeah. So, you understand what we just said?
No, 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 sorry.
Okay. On the one on, on Nostrate?
Yes.
Part of the comments from the deputy fire chief at the time back in November '23 is he wanted it paved, and we agreed, and we incorporated that into our decision.
It's in the plan set.
It's in this one?
Yeah, it's in the stamped and approved plan set. It's in the detail, actually, on the site plan that indicates it's paved.
Well, you... You want to show me, I'm not saying...
Yep. Approach, sure.
Yeah, yeah, if it's here, that's fine. I mean, what happened was that the new deputy chief reviewing, so I didn't see it on here, and that's what we're going by.
Yeah, no problem.
Is it a bit out here? Turn around?
Yeah, but it's supposed to come all the way around.
No, no, that wasn't a requirement, and we've gone through the notes, and we've also spoken with the fire department. There wasn't a requirement. This is a tree line. Going up through here, along here, that's a tree line.
We didn't have it cut?
No.
So how do you get up and around here?
That wasn't a requirement of the fire department. There's an access way down the center here. This was the only access way that they require, as part of their comments.
Well, we'll go back and look at the comments, just anyway, because...
I reconfirmed that with the fire department today.
Well, that's fine, but we was... I sat here through the whole thing, and I don't remember them saying they didn't need access all around, but we'll go back to...
They also reviewed all of their comments following your outreach to them. They've also reviewed all of their comments, and they concurred with me.
But this was made by now the present chief, so I don't recall. Does anybody remember that we were supposed to go all the way around?
It was not in the comments that were submitted. It wasn't part of the discussion that we had here, and it wasn't part of the discussion we had with the fire department. And the current chief approved those plan sets, as shown. And I think communicated that to the board.
They sent you Paul Barry's comments.
I know, but I would have a copy here, I wasn't gonna... We will look into it, and because I... Because I don't ever remember blocking the all the way around.
It was not part of the stormwater design. There was not ever any anticipated paved surface. In fact, we spoke specifically about not having a paved way for the access ways for maintenance during the discussion of the project.
Well, we'll go back to the comments that we had from him back in November and see anything in the decision, so... Got nothing else, right?
No. You'd like to talk?
What? What talk? I'll just talk into it. You want to sing into it, or is now we gotta sit here?
No, we don't want me to sing.
All right. All again, Heidi's not going to, right? Kate, I don't know if anybody's here for three Heidi subdivision that's on for 7:15. They're gonna continue without testimony, so if you're here for that, you might as well go home.
I can't do it anyway, I'm sorry, it's too early. I had the letter, but it's too early.
Yeah, it's too early. And if you're here for 3:97, Ellen, same deal. That was on 7:25 and 7:26. They're gonna continue without testimony, so if you're here for that one. So the only... Other than the zoning articles, we have Winter Estates at 7:20 and Kiasage at 7:30, so... Those are the only ones, so, that being said... It's funny how things now are slower than they used to be.
What, the clock?
Oh, well, it used to be about two minutes ahead. But, so is it go by that one?
Have you ever seen this?
Hmm?
Have you ever seen this?
Do I get one?
Watch the old one.
The old one?
Did you see that?
What, the dog?
Yeah, watch, watch.
What'd it do?
We need entertainment while we wait, so are we. What does it mean when it does that rainbow thing?
I'm gonna change that.
Okay, ready?
11:30 tonight.
See if you get it.
All right, 7:10. All right, with the article, the... Time being 7:10, we have a public hearing on zoning articles, and... Come on up, Patrick. You have numbers for them yet, for us?
We do. So, starting with the article going over the floodplain, that's Article 10.
Yeah.
The amendment to Article 1 is 11. Amendment to, I'm sorry, amendment to Section 1 is 11. Amendment to Section 2 is 12. Amendment to Section 3 is 13. Amendment to Section 4 is 14. Amendment to Section 7 is 15. And the amendment to the ADU is 16.
16, okay, just... All right, so with the hour being after 7:10, we will have a public hearing pursuant to the master general laws, Chapter 48, Section 5. The hearing for the proposed change to Waffle zoning bylaws. We have articles on a warrant, will be 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, 16. And the first one, we'll do one at a time naturally. All right, first one is gonna be Article 10. It's the amendment zoning bylaws for floodplain overlay district by deleting current sections entirety and inserting a new section, floodplain protection overlay district. It aligns with the conservation, Massachusetts DE, Department of Conservation, I should say, model bylaw. This is to meet the requirements of national flood insurance. So, with that being said, I don't know if this can be read, Patrick, but just...
Absolutely. So essentially, this came about where the new FEMA maps are being released on July 8th of this year. So, DCR, Department of Conservation Recreation, reached out actually a few years ago to kind of notify the town that along with those new maps, we would have to update our zoning bylaw to be matching the federal requirements for applicable property owners to have flood insurance. So, the bylaw itself is based really upon DCR's model bylaw. This one was really more or less going back and forth with DCR. They kind of steered everything. I know John and Phil, as part of the steering committee, we had talked about that. Not a lot of input with this one, it was mostly DCR telling us, this is what you need to do to be in compliance. You know, and like I said, many changes here. It's somewhat similar to pretty much what we had before, but some language had to be adjusted so that we are now compliant with the new maps come out. But I would take individual questions on that one.
Okay. Let's start with Paul, you got it, before I open up. Do you have any questions, comments on that?
No, pretty straightforward.
Kate?
Nothing.
Phil?
As Patrick said, John and myself were members of the steering committee, and I just want to say, you know, the committee worked very hard. We sometimes had meetings that went almost four hours, and, you know, so I don't have any questions on it, but certainly are supportive of it.
John?
A couple of housekeeping ones more, I think. On page four, it's subsection 5, use regulations.
Yep.
Looks like a spelling error on the second dot.
Okay.
State Building Co.
Oh, good catch from Simmons. Simmons, a D right there.
Uh, my other question was the... It was a couple points, it references the... Their decision dated July 8th, 2025. Is that an issue because it's in the future?
Uh, no. So that... We have to be compliant before the maps are updated, and so that's essentially what DCR said, so the map that will be...
So town council has no issue with the dated?
A future date.
Future.
It's what we'll have to work with.
Okay. If that's the case, is there a possibility that between the time... Town meeting is what, early May?
May 5th.
In between the May 5th, when we've put this into the pact, and the July 8th date, if something comes into play, is there a gray area there that a developer could take advantage of?
No. So essentially with... What, I guess the maps are not official live until July 8th, but with any zoning bylaw, when this was advertised, this became active, I guess, so to speak. So, the maps themselves, they...
Dated itself, okay, the map is dated that, but the zoning bylaw behind it is already in.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions. Oh, um... Had we decided that we were gonna bold the headings or the subheadings? I didn't notice it in that particular one. Was that something we were gonna do?
Um...
It seemed to be that way in most others.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely more of a, I guess, a slight formatting change, but yeah, I agree. Yep.
No other questions?
Okay.
All right, no other questions. Anybody in the audience have a question, comment relative to this article? Speaking of that, I'll make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Second, Phil. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, done.
All right.
Second one, the Article 11. It's deleting Section 1 in its entirety, and... And to reference state law, remove outdated and inconsistent language effectively to communicate the intention of zoning law, so that's the overview. This is the first one that's about five pages. Patrick?
Uh, do you have the edited version, or do you have the one in the warrant?
The one you sent before, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the... So the one in the warrant, we did the remove and replace, but then I think I did send you a copy of just the cross-out version, just so you could follow along with some of the edits. But this one, really this one and the next three were, you know, housekeeping is kind of a general term, but more or less, when we looked at this as a steering committee, it was going off of recommendations from town council in order to make the bylaws clear or have this section revert to accurately stating state law. And overall, more or less, these are cleanup articles, this one in particular. So, um, most of the language you'd see, I would say, is fairly similar to what we do have, it's just been edited really to address the comments from council.
Now, you said you have... You will be putting up the one that got the cross-outs, right?
Yeah, so the one in the warrant is the remove and replace. That was more of a kind of discussion in-house because of just the level of how it was, how you could read it. But for the packet, I'm providing, I guess, a memo, but then where town members can find the cross-up versions, so they can follow along a little better.
Okay. Start with John, do you have any questions, comments?
Uh, no comments.
Phil?
Yeah, just to reiterate, some of the major changes here is to take out redundant language and put the reference to state law, general law. We are... Right now, the bylaws have that language in the... In our zoning bylaws. So instead of having it in both two places, we just refer to the general law, which makes it... It avoids problems going forward in the future. If general law changes, we'd have to update our bylaws.
Kate?
I'm good.
Paul?
What prompted just the... It's just that these articles have not been updated over time?
Yeah, so this is really, um... The process of doing, I guess, like a zoning audit is something that's been brought to my attention. It's just, it's good for communities to do that every so often. You know, you bring in new zoning, you take out zoning. Sometimes years go by, and certain language may have made sense a while ago, but it should probably be updated and brought into kind of, you know, traditional speak. So, that process started about a year ago. Was able to get grant funding to work with a legal consultant, we ended up going with town council. And so, their guidance with it was more of looking at this from like a legal lens, not so much just a policy change, but really just how it should flow, to be clear, to be to the point, and just clean, so to speak.
So did an attorney add it? So the attorney added the updated language?
Yeah, so what they initially did was, they did the zoning audit, which is just a general like, hey, I recognize, these are a few sections you need to fix, these are the general problems I see. And then they took a more detailed approach of like a zoning diagnostic, where they went through subsection by subsection recommending changes if they were needed. And so from there, the steering committee, and this is kind of really general for all of what we did, is we looked at the approach of, well, do you want to take this all at once? Do we want to try to take it as like small parts at a time? Because you bring completely marked up zoning bylaw to town meeting, I'm sure people will throw me out. So, we took, looked at it as trying to take the, really just sections 1 through 4, and then we included Section 7, just because some of the edits recommended from town council were pretty minor, as kind of like the first go. And these sections in the comments that we got from town council were more, I guess you'd want to say, is they were more straightforward, whereas some of the edits that are needed further along, for like Section 5 and Section 6, are gonna be a lot more... We're gonna have a lot longer conversations, I guess, so to speak, because there's a lot of changes there, a lot of things that we need to kind of think about. So these changes were more or less kind of straightforward suggestions that came from council, and then the steering committee was able to kind of debate each one and factor that in with the amendment.
So nothing really changed to me, so it's still the same meeting, it's just it's cleaned up and it's more updated.
Correct.
Jack, I was gonna say so.
Yeah?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that the audit was one of the recommendations in the master plan. It's one of the recommendations, yeah.
All right. I got a question and a comment?
Yeah.
All right. First off, uh... The zoning articles, once upon a time, you had your two-thirds, now there's like 50% for one type and two-thirds for second type.
Yep.
All right. Can you just go down quickly, what's two-thirds and what's 50?
So, all of these are two-thirds with the exception of the ADU article. So they all...
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's easy. All right. Now, my question is, when I looked at this, is right now, there's nothing... What was taken out of here was how many plans you file, so how do we know?
Yeah, I thought you'd bring that up. So this is, I did want to kind of read the language that we got from town council, and I think that's something that even the committee too. We looked at town council's recommendation, which was to add that language of deferring to 40A. It's also something that could add back if the board thought it was a better suggestion.
Well, if I come to file a special permit, I don't know how many plans I'm supposed to give the town.
No.
How are they gonna know?
So, I guess, I'll find the language from council, but essentially, her suggestion was that's more of a board process, so how the board runs their application process, you know, how your application is set up, what information that you need them to provide. The board can dictate that, it's not information that really needs to be within the zoning. So like a rules and regulations, a board can have their own rules and regulations for process.
Can we cut the phone, please?
Yes.
Or just go outside? Yeah, but before, it had what had to be the meat in there, so there was no argument.
Oh, in terms of the number of copies?
Oh, copies and that type of stuff. So right now, we don't have any. Okay, that was my comment, it's not in there.
So it would be up to us, though, to set that, that number?
Yeah, I understand that, Phil, but if this goes through, it would be nice, if I didn't bring it up, guy would come in and say, what do we submit? I'd be like, uh.
Yeah.
Those are the things I don't like when get dropped. People should be aware of them ahead of time.
I didn't catch that, but you bring it up, and that is, I can't tell you how many times certain people stand at that podium and say, it doesn't say that.
Wow.
So it... I know it might seem like it's something we can just set.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be the same for everyone who comes before us, and if it's not blatant black and white, it's an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it absolutely, I think, should be recorded, and I think if it's in this process, we can add in this process. Town council's thought was that some aspects of a board handles an application doesn't necessarily need to be within the zoning, it can be within the board's own rules and regulations. That's a separate document, kind of like your subdivision rules and regulations.
But it probably should be done all at the same time, so that there's not a time lapse where, you know, you come in and do it one way, and he comes in and does it another way. You know what I mean?
Yep.
All right, anybody else? You guys all set? Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments? All right. Make a motion to endorse Article 11.
Do you have a favorable action? Favorable action?
I like endorse. Yeah, what she said, okay? All those in...
Favorable action.
I got a second for Phil. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna say abstain till we get something squared with that.
You're expecting it, Jake.
Yep, so, so 401. Uh, next one is the Article 12, it's from Section 2.
Yep.
Delete the section entirely and insert a new section administration. The changes look to properly reference state law, outdated inconsistent language, but all the zoning board, planning board, and outline the special permit variant process in a concise manage... manner. So with that being said, explain that one, Patrick.
Absolutely, yeah. Similar kind of theme as the other one. One thing I know, noticed here, when our town council noticed, is that we didn't include, I guess, the planning board as part of that administration process, so we wanted to include, I guess, what would be the new Section 2.2, uh, for that, as the planning board, you know, also deals with special permits, we wanted to make sure that that was accounted for within the zoning. Most of the... Really, most of this is fairly similar. Variances has been cut down to really kind of reference state law as well as the special permit section. The findings and determination, I think we removed, I believe, just one, because it was repetitive. So, not many changes that stood out, other than the fact that some of the language is reduced because it defers to state law, rather than repeating the state law within the zoning itself.
Okay. Paul, Europe.
On the special permits?
Mm-hmm.
It's crossed out, at least the copy I have here, about the 14 days before the hearing. Section 4.
Section 4.
So 1, 2, the new planning board, right, 3, special permits. Am I on the right one?
No.
Oh, forgot about one, okay.
Yeah, no, that's a...
Am I...
It was hard to figure out which one.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's like, I think I gave you a lot of paperwork, just because I wanted to make sure you had the markup one as well as the one that's in the warrant, but...
3A4, is that the one you're talking about?
Which one is this?
It's here, if you look to the ones that he was looking at.
Yeah.
Paul's looking at the cross-off. Oh, okay.
Bypassing check. Yeah, you've just...
Calvin? You don't have any? All right, yeah, yeah. All right, Phil?
I'm good with it.
John?
See how... This one says Section 1, Section 2.
Uh, yes, I'm good.
All right. Question I have?
Yeah.
Between the time for the lapse, special permits, three years? I don't got the original. What was it before?
It was 2.
2, when we moved it to 3?
Yeah, that was more in line with mass general law.
But there is no site plan for special permits, mass general law, right?
No, but... Section...
All right, so we just upped that, but now the next one is variances. I was always under the impression, assumption forever, it's two years.
Sorry, Jack, I thought that was what you were talking about. Yeah, no, that's, um...
Section 2.
2.
One's longer than I thought, and the other one's less than I thought.
Yeah.
What is currently, isn't a variance two years? You want me to tell you something?
It was three years, and that's what dictated the change.
Okay.
Yep.
So, under C, it says lapse, a special permit lapse within three years, okay?
Yep.
All right, so that's a new time period, correct?
Yes.
Now, drop down to under variances, under D, it said one year. What is the present now, is it? I always thought it was two.
For a special permit?
No. Special permit, you're putting it up to three?
Yes.
What is it presently in our book?
Two.
So you bumped that up. All right, now, going down to variances, I was always on the assumption that variance is good for two years.
That one is actually, is one year.
It is one year in our book?
Yeah.
So there's no change there?
No change with that one.
Okay. What? Okay. Is it one year? Is a vari... Is that in mass general laws, or do they up to individual towns to set the time?
For variance?
Yeah, the time to do it.
Mass general law, no.
Mass general law says one year?
One year, yeah.
Okay. All right, I was always under the impression it was two, but that's fine, that's my only comments. Anybody else have any questions, comments relative to what will be out of the... Paul?
I was in the right place, so...
What was it?
Yeah, so Section 2 administration.
Yes.
All right? So on, on... I'm looking at the, you know, the cross-off.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
And again, it talks about the 14 days before the hearing, the information needs to be in Section 4. Right now, because the only thing it says now for...
Notice of public hearings.
Yeah, notice of public hearings.
Section 4.
Well, sub 4, subsection 2.4, call it.
It's Section 2, it's under special permits.
Yep.
Section 3.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A4.
Section 4, got it.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, so that's basically because the language that was in there was essentially what was the state law, so rather than repeat it, it's better just to reference it, because if anything changes, we're always compliant with what the state requirements are.
So 14 days is, so telling how many, how many days before?
In terms of?
Of getting information in before it's a town hearing.
What'd you say?
What does Chapter 40A, Section 11 say?
The language that was essentially in there, that's why town council recommended, rather than repeating it in the off chance anything changes, or if it's repeated incorrectly, if you state revert to state law, an applicant needs to know that we're basically compliant with the state requirements for advertisement.
Okay.
Does it say, what does it say there?
It just talks about the 14 days before the, it's like this, but it's, but Patrick's saying is that if all of this is in this, so they're just referencing, so if the state makes the changes and the town just...
Okay, so there is a notice requirement, a minimum days before the hearing, they gotta get it in?
Yep.
Per Section 48, subsection 11.
Yeah, so I'm just saying is that, again, it's kinda like on what Katie said, you know, we've been taking stuff out in some states before you.
No, and I, I understand, I mean, it kind of, it is, and that's really kind of where we came to that debate, is the recommendation from council was more or less trying to find a way to be, I guess, direct with it, and, and just clearly revert back to state law rather than repeat something and risk having something incorrectly stated, so that's why...
Well, exactly, yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense, Patrick, right? Because again, let the state update it, right, because we flow to the state, and then they just have to go to the state, and if any change is made, then you, it, it, it doesn't require us to keep updating ours constantly and seeing what the state is.
Yeah, that's the general thought process with it, yep.
And updating our bylaws is a, you know, is a more long process, so it's, it'd be hard to be, you know, to do that quick.
I think my inexperience of just not knowing what that, you know, that GLC 40A...
No, and honestly understandable, and that's, that was kind of the back and forth of whether or not to leave it, whether or not to over explain, or whether or not to default to state law, and I think ultimately the group, that's where we ended up, is having it be the summary version.
And that was the general philosophy we followed through all the changes.
But let me ask you something. Will, will, you know, somebody from the town are gonna always look at that law? I mean, will they go to the state for that, or will they look at our, they'll look at ours?
You're talking about a, like an applicant?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then the...
That's the concern, right? So, you know, I, yes, it's, yes, it's, you know, be easy for us to say, "Well, listen, you know, 48, did you refer to that?" "No, I didn't."
No, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I think just wanting to be consistent and not try to provide information that may be counter to state law.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I get it.
Understand.
So what you'll have now is your regular zoning book, your subdivision control book, and your mass general law book.
Yeah.
That's one thing I noticed here, they took the stuff out, it's, I know it's redundant, makes our life easier. Now it's like, and I'm sure there's at least one individual who thinks he's a member of the Supreme Court gonna tell me that this is wrong.
Understand.
Want me to name him?
No.
No, no.
Let's keep moving.
That went over my head.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
What, the guy who knows more than all of us, who tells us how to do our jobs? During every hearing?
Let's keep going.
No, no, I got my shots in here, that's why I got the big stick. All right, any questions, comments, I think I did that, would be a none, make a motion. 200.
Favorable action.
Favorable action. Second, John, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain. All right, 13, amend zoning bylaws enforcement by deleting the common section entirely and inserting a new section. Once again, it's going on the state law. I know I had something on that too, but, all right.
Yeah.
Highlighted, Patrick, on what?
So this, I know Jim in particular, it was very helpful to have him as part of that steering committee, because Jim is, sorry, Jim Crowley, building inspector, as well as the zoning enforcement agent, so having his feedback, as well as from town council's feedback helped to kind of reduce this bylaw. Same philosophy really, is trying to not overly state something if it's already covered under mass general law, and just defer to mass general law. The other thing was to kind of clearly state the penalty, I think we had a situation where it repeated twice, so we had to cut a sentence out there to just make it cleaned up and clear. Certificate of occupancy, we removed that section just because it was something that Jim deals with, it's not really much of a zoning thing, it's more of a building thing, so really just tried to, same philosophy, really just try to reduce that to, to be direct.
Okay.
Yeah.
John? No?
I have no questions.
Kate?
Nothing.
Paul?
I'm good.
All right, question?
Yes.
You call building inspector, is that the correct term?
Oh, yeah.
Building inspector? I would love Jim to answer that.
Yes, correct term, because incorporates, there's local inspector, and there's building, building inspector of buildings, which incorporates building commissioners, so by doing building inspector incorporates both inspectors.
Aren't you zoning enforcement too?
Yes.
So wouldn't that be more apropos here, or not?
The zoning enforcement officer.
Call it the zoning enforcement, because this is zoning, I don't know, I just...
Yeah, because every town, the only person that does zoning enforcement is tied back under mass general law 143, is tied back to the building department, so even if we had a standalone zoning enforcement officer, he actually would be a building inspector tied back to the building department.
So it's always tied, that's my question, I don't need someone saying, "Oh, you know, you're the zoning enforcement officer, I want to see the building inspector."
Yeah.
So it's not, okay, that's, I just want to make sure it's all tied back.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions, comments regarding Article 13? Would be a none, make a motion 2.
4.
Hmm?
4.
4. Favorable action.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain. 14, amend zoning bylaws, Section 4, establish them in a district by deleting the common section, establish a new one, and once again, we're on the same deal as everything else cleaning up, so Patrick?
Yeah, similarly, I mean, the, the explanation about the residential and commercial districts, there was a little bit of a formatting change there, we separated that, the overlay to be its own kind of section, and there was also, we didn't reference the East Wallpole Center Parking Relay Overlay District, which is something we, we referenced under our parking, but we wanted to make sure that we actually include that as an overlay. Some of the descriptions for a couple of districts, we, we altered them to just be a little bit more specific, I think one in particular, like the Central Business District, we want to make sure it referenced that, hey, it's, it's a location for high pedestrian travel, you know, public, access to public transit, in a, in access to restaurants, small scale dining, I think there was language in there that kind of referenced like a symbol of the town, which was very interesting language, I thought it should be, we thought that should be a little more direct, or at least town council referenced that, we should have it a little more direct. One of the things here that I think, I think we spent the entire meeting talking about was split zoning. In the existing bylaw, it's its own subsection, but we incorporated it as part of the rules for interpreting the district boundaries. So the language here, we really went back and forth on this one, this was one that we thought, that town council believed that the way we currently had it structured was, was not really conducive to, you know, to other communities, but also something that was easy to follow, so, or to understand really, not so much follow, so that was, that was, I think, more of the, more of a substance, substance change, as opposed to just clean up, so that was something that we noticed is a little bit altered language there.
All right, Paul?
So, can you just go back and just explain that a little bit more detail, Patrick, just so, so, so split boundary?
Yeah, yep, so, just bring up the way we have it written now.
The first one.
So he said that they, they page 3, uh, the 4, page 4.
So, the la, town, town council basically, when she, when she looked at the way the current writing was, she indicated the language used in the subsection was cumbersome and ambiguous, and the town may wish to revisit the rules on split lots to clarify, so in order to do this, we, we looked at how neighboring towns had their version of split lots, and how it was interpreted, we looked at probably, let's say, at least 10 or so other towns, and the language we have here was more consistent with, I want to say Norfolk, was some, was one of the, was one of the towns that we thought had a pretty well-written bylaw, so I'll just read it out, "So when an underlying zoning district boundary line excluding overlay zoning districts divides any lot in one ownership of record at the time such line is adopted, a use that is permitted on one portion of the lot may be extended 30 feet into the other portion, provided that the first portion of the lot, which is the, the lot, I guess the use to intend to use, includes the required frontage associated with the proposed use." So essentially, you're allowed to cross over by 30 feet, depending on the use that you intend to use, I guess the best way of explaining it, so if you want to build like a single-family home and it's split between that and a commercial district, as long as you have the frontage for a sink, for that single-family home district, you're allowed to extend 30 feet into that commercial district, just to try to give an example.
So basically, you just summarized it and put it in 4H, basically?
Yeah, yeah, so we didn't include as its own subsection, we put it into 4H, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
All right. All right, I'm good, Jack.
Okay, Kate?
Okay, I want to revisit the CBD.
Yes.
So, not to go off on a spiel, but I feel that our zoning has helped us to destroy the downtown, so, that being said, why are we taking out, to provide, to provide a center for municipal and cultural activities, and to act as a landmark and symbol of the town?
It wasn't clear in terms of what uses that was, so that's why the description is, it refers back to, like, uses like banks, restaurants, small-scale retail, town council thought rather than a general explanation, you should explain what type of uses are primarily within that district.
But like, let's use the old police station as an example.
Yeah.
Like, wouldn't you say that's a landmark, symbol of the town?
Yeah, I, it is, but I think just from the perspective, what, what this section is trying to do, is really just trying to provide, like, here's in generality, what type of uses you would see in those districts.
But I think by, so I think if anything, we should be looking at, and this isn't at you. I think we should, if we're going to make changes, especially to the CBD, I think we should be really getting into it, and in a section like that, I don't think we should be broad and general in referring to state rules, I think we should be trying to keep some identity, I think that the, some of the buildings downtown have helped us to lose our identity, and I think if we look at some of the surrounding towns around us, they've been able to avoid that, and I think that the state is just pushing us to completely lose our identity with, you know, all the regulations they're pushing at us for our downtowns, so...
I, I...
I oppose that, I know it, you might say it's, doesn't, it's not specific, but in my eyes, it's something to hold on to.
Yeah.
Because I feel like a lot of projects that come before us, it's very frustrating because we're forced to vote in a certain way, and we can't have an opinion, and this gives us something to hold on to, if we can say, "Well, that's a landmark." Well, that's, you know what I mean, and, and that's why I, I'm not saying that's worded well, or that's the best way it should read, but I think it's something to hold on to until we change it in a way that we can do, give us a little power.
No, absolutely, I think what I'm hearing you say, and I, I agree, because this is kind of our next phase, and I think it'd be great to work with the planning board on this, is Section 5 and Section 6, right, are uses as well as our dimensional regulations. Those situations, like you mentioned, within the downtown, you know, let's talk of what it is, right, see, it's the mixed use, and that zoning that was there hasn't really been changed in decades, so it's a good opportunity to...
But I think character comes into it too.
Hmm?
I think character comes into it too. It's not just use and, you know, from someone who's not a planner, I'm just a regular person, you know what I mean? When I look at it, I think that character is a big part of who we are, so we can spell out, you know, what uses are allowed, how high something can be, but I think it's also nice to be able to hold on to a character, so that's just my opinion.
No, I, I definitely hear you there, and I think, especially under the long, like I said, long range, Section 5 is, that's, that, Section 5 and 6 are really like the meat of the bylaws, right? So that's a good section to really revisit CBD.
You're, in your opinion, would something like that go back into a Section 5 or Section 6?
Something like this?
Yeah. But what was, what was taken out?
This is really, this portion of it, when it's describing the, the establishment of the districts, it's, this section's really just trying to provide an overview of what uses you would see in it, and I mean, the language we have there now, we could quit, we can put it back, you know, we have something in there in terms of like vibrant town center. Now vibrant town center is also kind of like a subjective term, right? What is, what is vibrant for some person, it might be different for another, so it's really trying to find the best summary if we, if possible, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's use West and Spring as an example, the one I just abstained from because I was frustrated. You know, you could say that's vibrant, and that's...
Exactly.
But it's, in my eyes, we don't need another big apartment building there, so that's what I mean by, we have to really look at what we're doing, and how these projects can sneak in, because since I've been sitting here, and I've been sitting here for a bit now, I can't tell you how many times I've been frustrated with how I've been forced to vote, because town council says we have to vote that way, because we are bound by what's in the book, and that's, so that's why I'm hesitant on this, I'm frustrated, so, and that's not your fault, but, and I'm sorry, you're the one that has to stand there and listen to me gripe, but, that's just how I feel, I've said enough. You can go on.
You hit him with a marshmallow.
It, honestly, Kate, it's all good stuff, because I think, I keep on going back to 5 and 6, because that's really, that's a good opportunity to address how mixed use is calculated, and how if that's something, that could be refined, so...
Thank you.
But, yeah, absolutely.
So, anyone else have any questions, comments? Phil?
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Kate, that we do want to keep our, our look at view in the downtown, and I just want to note that, Section 13, we have designed standards and guidelines for the Central Business District, that does try to lay out what, what we would like buildings to look, look like, you know, I don't know how far we could go in our bylaws to, you know, to really designate or, or legislate what they should look like, but at least it gives, you know, it gives some guidance, and maybe we can improve upon that. And I know there's a, there's a, an approach to zoning, and it's zoning by, almost by pictures, I'm not, I forget the exact technical term of it, but basically, when, when they write their zoning bylaws, they show diagrams of what buildings should look like, so it's more pictorial, it gives you, you know, the, the type of look you're, that you're looking for now. A lot of towns that have existing zoning, it's difficult to do that, because you already have so much existing zoning, but that, you know, again, that, that might be another, another thing to look further on, you know, for, a section, you know, Section, like I said, Section 13, Section 12, does lay out some, you know, some guidance for what we're looking for, the way we want our Central Business District to look like.
All right, question?
Yes.
From me. Under G, location of district, you get the boundaries showing within Appendix A, shouldn't that be a zoning map, since everything else is? Shouldn't it be someday put as a map, or something to that effect?
Yeah, so I think that language, we, we kept from the old bylaw, because we already, we have it, but probably could change that, so we have it in the zoning now as a Appendix A.
Well, I think you need a map for everything.
Yeah, we do.
But that doesn't say map, it says appendix, it doesn't even give you a date either, that's another problem.
Oh, yeah.
So, that needs, that...
Needs to be looked at.
You gotta, yeah, you gotta nail that one down, Patrick, you just can't say an Appendix A, and the other problem is Appendix A of what date, you know what I mean?
We did, so yeah, you're right, we didn't change that one, so that's actually what's in the zoning.
I, no, but, yeah, but you're changing, so you want to make it better, so make, you gotta make this one better, so that, you know, which Appendix A do you have? 1960 or 1995, so, and that should probably be a map at some point, but I think you need to nail it down, I think if you go to the back of the book, as you can see, they tell you the dates all this stuff happens, so at least for now, you should at least insert it for the, for this article.
Yeah.
All right, whatever the date they, whatever date was put in there in the back of the book, at least you could, you have something, that's all.[1772.62] book, at least you could have something, that's all.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have no other questions? Anybody in the audience? No? Okay, make a motion to endorse.
F favorable action.
Make a motion for affirm, affirmative action, you like that? I like affirmative. F favorable action.
Second?
There was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain.
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 Three zero two?
Three zero two. All right, number fifteen, article to change signs and definitions per section seven, and inclusion of numericals, sign for constitutionality and protected political non-commercial signs. So with that being said, please explain what's.
Yeah, no, so this one is, we broke this up really where the other ones were more comprehensive. Town council didn't find many faults with our sign bylaw from just the standpoint of like a legality position, but the sections that we did add, so like constitutionally protected signs, it's obvious, but it needs to be in there as an exempt sign. Some of the changes we added to to the administration section were just more, I guess, wordsmithing. We also, within permitted signs within residential districts, we wanted to be able to kind of provide dimensions for essentially all permitted signage not previously defined. That was a recommendation to kind of make sure that we didn't leave that open-ended. So that's why that language comes in there, that's section seven point four D. Sign types, this one was, I know Jim and I kind of discussed, this one was looking at ground signs, and rather than having it worded the way it was, we thought monument signs was probably a more appropriate use to have in there. It's a sign type that you see where it's more or less, there's no separation between the ground and the sign, it's it's usually a stone facade. And so that sign, not having that in our zoning bylaws, we wanted to have that take the place of ground sign, which more or less, we already do have that when you see a, I call it like an awning sign, but usually a pylon sign fits more the definition. So we didn't think we're losing anything with a ground sign, but we're gaining something by having monument sign in there and having that defined. The other change we had was secondary wall signs. So the way we had it now is, you have your one principal, and you're allowed up to one other sign on a, one other wall sign. So the secondary wall sign allowed basically up to two secondary wall signs. And a situation where this comes in really is like the highway business district, right? So you have your front-on wall sign, but you have traffic coming northbound, traffic coming southbound. So we've had situations, too, where like applicants, especially for like the mall property, have needed variance, because the way our sign bylaw is now, you can only have two wall signs. So on the highway business district, it doesn't really work out that way, just from the standpoint of the type of businesses that go in there. So the secondary wall sign language is to try to at least, all right, well, you can have your primary, you get two secondary, so we try to prevent businesses from needing a sign variance.
Okay.
And that's really it.
John?
So we're saying like the political signs are allowed by right, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Phil?
I have no questions.
Kate?
I have nothing.
Paul?
Had you just done on the all non-residential districts?
Yeah.
Section, it looks here at seven, it says monument signs, one sign.
Yep.
It used to not exceed six, now it's four?
Yeah, monument signs, trying to find the right dimension is kind of, could be subjective, but a four-foot sign directly from the bottom, we thought would be more appropriate than a six-foot tall monument sign, which might be more of an obstruct traffic, it might be less, you know, a problem with driving. So the four-foot sign, it's lower to the ground.
So was that a decision of the committee?
Yeah, I mean, it was fleshed out, I guess, really by Jim and I, but then we obviously talked about it with the steering committee as well.
Yeah, so one of the main reasons was, on the ground sign, they were given a six-foot tall sign that was literally right up at the corner street. So if you're leaving, say, the mall or a corner street, it is six-foot sign very close to the road would impede your visual sight or someone seeing you. So we brought it back down, down to four feet, so you have a visual line of people coming towards you, and they can see you pulling out with the traffic as well.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. All right, I got a couple of questions for you. Do we have a definition in the book now for non-commercial signs?
Non-commercial signs?
Because that's the question I'm going to ask, is there a definition? What is a definition of non-commercial?
I'll have to find out. No, we don't have a definition for that. Yep.
You're gonna need one.
Absolutely. Yep.
That's a definite. If they're, now you said political signs, is there a definition of what that means?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so the reason political signs were brought back in, it was originally in our zoning in two thousand eight, it was taken out. The reason being it was taken out was, it's an exempt sign that was through the state and actually through the federal under the First Amendment, so it was allowed as of right. The reason we brought it back in is because over the last, and especially the last election, over the last eight years, there's been a lot of fighting going on and putting signs out and political, and people are saying, well, it's not in our zoning, we want, you can't tell me not to take it down. So we kind of brought it back in to say, yeah, that political signs are exempt, but that's basically falls under state and federal law. So definitions are there. And again, it's under the First Amendment, so we have some signs out there, there are political, we have some that are coasting on the line of political to vulgar.
How do you define political, though?
As long as it's with anything that's with the state, if it's an election, so like, I can't just put a sign up and it has to be for basically for an election, if something's being voted. So if you're running for the chair, you can put outside, vote.
Is that what it says, though?
State law-wise, yeah. I think that's going for a vote on election.
That's where I'm going with, you just can't put a sign out that I like my select?
No.
All right. Are you, are they bounded by our sign bylaws as height and all that, or?
Political signs, no. It's a gray area, and there's actually a few cases in court and at the higher courts right now. You can't put a sign up, it depends how big you make it, then we can step in and say, well, now it's a structure, the structure's not allowed, the sign is, but you're gonna take, that's where it gets to the gray area, someone could bolt one to the side of their house, then it's a sign, but it's not a structure, it's just tied to their house.
Is there a, is there a time limit for these?
So not, so this is where, again, it gets very tricky. State law says after forty-eight hours remove a political sign after an election.
Forty-eight, okay.
Problem is, if someone takes one down, but then puts it back in his yard and says, well, yeah, the election's gone, but now it's my state and my freedom of speech that this is my opinion. It's, so it's extremely gray area that, there's been some cases on it, but there's been no definite answer from the state, because nobody, they don't really want to touch it.
So if if someone has two hundred signs spread around town a month later, you can tell them to take them down, right?
Technically, we can take them down, and if they refuse, then it's kind of a.
Election sign.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just, that's, never knew what what that was then. All right, and the ground-mounted ones for the monument, I experienced that in my last company down in Seccong, and they had a thing four foot, but they also had something four foot above your sightline. So if you ever had a driveway come out and you got a hump, you can't see over it. You follow?
Yeah.
I know you want four feet. Four feet is, you're not gonna be able to see over it. But you know, sometimes you got the driveways down a foot or two, if that's up on a hill.
It's like the grade may impact.
Yeah, something, you might want to strengthen a little bit that can't be over this site. I think that's what you're looking for, cause exiting and entry, or exiting mostly, right?
Yeah, it's, that's what we kind of cleared it up with ground signs, because the ground signs are very, again, in section seven we're saying six feet high, but then section five was saying ground mounted signs couldn't exceed eight feet high. You know, like.
No, I.
So we're trying to say, the problem with that is, we would probably, if we go out to a site visit usually to see where the sign is going, and if it's going to impede, then we'd bring the applicant in and go through it with it, not to put him under the bus, but we'd go up to Carol, because again, he's the engineer at Towns, we'd ask him his opinion as well on it, then we go back to the applicant, and then it's up to either we deny him on the grounds of life safety, and they'd have the right then to appeal me to the zoning board for denying them the sign. So we can deny someone a sign if we deem it that it's going to be, in that case where they're below the sign, the sign's actually six feet tall, we can deny it and state why we're denying it, and they have the right then to appeal me to the zoning board.
Okay, so the whole point, the backdrop to this is, you'd be able to see over it.
Yeah, exactly.
So if you're up on a hill, and the driveway's down here, you can say, we want to be able to see it, we can't.
Yeah.
So you can deny them in that case.
Exactly.
All right, that's, as long as you protect it like that. All right. One last.
Yeah.
Can you put a sign up in your yard that just says, I like mom? Is that, I'm just asking, because people put a lot of whack things, something, you know what I mean? Where does this go, Jim?
So you could technically say yes, and we could, and residential, you're allowed to put on a, basically protect the sign up, that's a foot square. If you put a billboard up, then we have to look into it, well, is it their, is it a statement, is their First Amendment being affected by it? It's an opinion, it's a right to do it. That's an extremely gray area.
Well, and I don't mean to belabor this, but I read a little while ago about Vermont, about a donut shop that painted the side of their building to look like a donut shop.
Yep.
And the town went after it. Do you consider anything painted like that to be a sign? Is that covered under this bylaw?
No, so that actually covered under federal law, there was a famous case, Rice case, that brought this into play. If you do a mural on a building, but don't state the business.
Yeah.
Then it's a mural, it's a painting, it's a siding, it doesn't count as a sign. If you put Dunkin' Donuts in the middle of that donut, now that's actually not a piece of art, that is advertisement. So as long as you don't put a name on it, you could put a.
It can look exactly like it, but just keep.
Just keep your name off it, federal law, Rice case.
I just wanted, I was wondering about that. Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments from the audience regarding that sign bylaw? I will make a motion for favorable action on article fifteen zoning bylaw signs.
Second.
There was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And number sixteen, the men's only bylaw, section five B two, accessory dwelling units, and the definitions, the intent is to revise the provisions to be consistent with chapter, section seven, eight of one fifty, Acts of two thousand twenty-four, Mass Affordable Homes Act, as amended. So with that being said, Patrick?
Yep, so as the board knows, we, you know, we had amended our, I guess, our accessory dwelling unit bylaw last fall. Around that same time, Governor introduced what was the Affordable Homes Act. It goes through the, with all pieces of the legislature, it goes through the process of, before it is finally signed into effect, which the Governor signed into effect in August. With that was essentially the placement of an accessory dwelling unit and how it's defined in, it's been actually added to the Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, section three, so it's becoming a protected use. So with that, every town in Massachusetts now needed to essentially comply with that change. Some towns didn't have accessory dwelling unit bylaws to begin with, we had one, so our change really is to make that language complying to the state law. And some of the big ones there is, you know, we cannot prohibit occupancy, can't prohibit whether it's attached or detached. One thing that the state defines is like the size of of an ADU, so it's a, it's half the floor area of the principal dwelling unit up to nine hundred square feet. So if you have a home that's, let's say, you know, twelve hundred square feet, then your ADU is limited to six hundred square feet, to give you kind of an example there. We also had to make changes to the regulations to reflect what the direction was from, the state agency's called Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, they are like DHCD. When the state made the change to zoning law, it deferred to that state agency as providing regulations. And so the main takeaway from those regulations is that you can't make your ADU regulations more restrictive than what you would allow for a single-family home. So that's essentially why some of the use regulations are kind of toned down. The law does provide the town a little bit of flexibility when it comes to determining if you want to enact a, like a site plan review process or a limited site plan review process. So the steering committee, we decided that in terms of a further review, we would have a limited site plan review process for detached, just because currently attached, attached ADUs go through just the building permit process as you would with any other addition to your home, but detached, it's nothing that we've had in the town before, and it's something that I thought, at least the steering committee thought, that required a little bit more look at from, you know, from whether it being fire, border health, sewer and water. So that's why that limited site plan review process is a, is a new phase, and it's a phase that we had in there. But, you know, a lot of this, like we had, you know, mentioned, it's, we are, you know, beholden to the state, really, for a few things, but the, making these changes allows us to have some regulation where we're able to, and that's kind of where the limited site plan review process comes in. It's also when we default to like setbacks. So one of the provisions in there is that we wanted to have the ADU compliant to the setbacks of the principal dwelling unit, rather than being treated as a accessory structure. So that was something we added in there, just because we, you know, it's a habitable space, we thought it should fall in line with the same use as a single-family home. So happy to answer any questions and clarify anything, especially with the state law.
Paul?
No, I'm good, Jack, on this one.
You don't want to hear from me.
Oh, come on.
This is just one of those examples of where I don't think the state should be sticking their nose in, but.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Phil?
Yeah, and having been on the, on the steering committee.
Let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but thank you for adding those two provisions. I appreciate that, so.
Having been a member of the steering committee, I have no questions, but I do want to, again, highlight, you know, what Patrick said, there was a lot of debate and discussion about, you know, what we can do to give us some, you know, some level of control, and that was, that was one of them, was the limited site plan review.
I think we had two meetings worth of just this alone. I think we had like two meetings worth of just this alone, so it was a very.
The steering committee gave a lot of attention to all the details here.
John?
I think we've covered most of it. I concur with Katie, I'm tired of the state forcing things down our throats. Hopefully, I've got something else to do, but I have no other comments.
Okay. Patrick, I'm looking here, maybe it's here, I know I wrote it down, work and bring it. Where does it say that you're going to follow all the zoning setbacks?
That is, it's a, I guess, Use Regulation three F. So the language says, an accessory dwelling unit shall comply with the setbacks and dimensional regulations applicable to the principal dwelling for the zoning district in which the principal dwelling is located.
Okay, where does, where would it say, or is it understood, but it should say that like resource protection area, I don't see that mentioned here.
Oh, so yeah, that would, that bypasses that. So you're talking about if they need to seek additional approval for like if it's in the floodplain or.
No, no, no. We're, we're in a resource protection area.
Yeah.
All right, you can only have fifteen percent, you gotta be on either septic or eighty thousand feet for one week. Is that in this, too?
It's not in this, but that, this does not bypass section twelve, they still need to comply with section twelve.
Is there anything that would say it doesn't have to?
Uh, no, I'll watch him, but.
All right, I'm coming in, and I'm going to say, where does, tell me, tell me.
So those actually go under F, so the fifteen percent set or requirement under the water protection area is a dimensional requirement.
Okay.
So that does.
That's where I'm going with, all that's, you're all protected.
It's all covered with dimensional requirement, zoning requirement.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. And didn't you, when you, before us, I think you said GR, but you can't. think you said GR, but you can't do this in GR, correct?
Uh, you can do it in GR, any, any residential district that allows for single-family construction.
Well, well, here's the, well, I read number three, "In all single-family residential zoning districts," GR is not a single-family zoning district.
It actually is, so, single-family zoning district, rather than a single-family dwelling, single-family zoning district is anywhere you legally are allowed a single-family by right, so if you have, are in a GR district, and if you have 15,000 square feet, you can do a single-family, you can't get to a two-family without being 20,000 square feet for a two-family, and then 10,000 after that, adding on, so GR does allow single fam- you could have five acres of land in GR and just not like people, and decide, I'm just doing a single-family home, and that's it, you have that right there as well in GR.
All right, so the 10,000 doesn't kick in either.
So that does on multiple families, so if you have a single-family home, you're protected, so if you're in GR and have a single-family home, and you can meet all the setbacks.
Yeah.
That home does kick in.
They're in a four-family.
If you're in a four-family, then that does kick in, because that's one of our dimensional requirements, we can require that you have to have 10,000 per unit.
Okay, all right, I see, that.
That's where I get, GR is going, where multifamilies where it's going to get really tricky.
All right, no, I, now I understand what you're saying, Jim, uh, one last comment, we're missing something from this whole rewrite, you can get rid of single-family, we don't have any, if this goes through, we have no more single-family, right, it's gone, it, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And the ADU came from California, which I'm not too happy, even it's getting shoved down, so basically, we no more have single-family residents in this state anymore.
I guess that's how I would define it.
Okay, maybe we should put that in there, I know you wouldn't want to, because people would burn this one up in a heartbeat, the town meeting, saying, whoa, whoa, what do you mean no more single-family residents, well, that's, this takes it away, doesn't it?
I guess, yeah, how you would look at, yeah.
Yep, okay, yeah, California is a good example to follow.
This is, one of the articles that's just majority, is that correct?
This one is just majority, um, that was part of the change.
None of the others were, just this one.
Just this one, none of the others.
And this is one of those ones where they told us we have no say.
Yeah.
Because the state says that it's allowed, so the only say we have is by putting the limited site plan and the setbacks.
Trying to, yeah, and some of the regulations for use, so, like, really, if we pass nothing, Jim still has to comply with the state law.
Right, and if we don't vote for this, this limited site plan and the setbacks don't come into play.
Correct.
So you have less power.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it.
Now, it is true that if you're in a septic area, you have a problem, right?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we had a conversation with, um, other department heads, and how that would be looked at, and so sewer and water, you know, if you're going to have, if you, if there's municipal sewer, it's a separate, it's a separate structure, it needs to have its own separate service line, whether, if it's an attached, it can be part of the primary, um, septic, and Jim, answer me my question this way, you can, can we tie in the septic, is that different than sewer?
It falls over Title V, or the septic is, if you have a four-bedroom septic, and the main house is three bedrooms, you have the right to tie your bedroom in, and the health department do require you do a deed restriction if you do get the septic to four bedrooms, or you do have the right to put in a separate septic for the ADU.
Yeah, and that's happened in Norfolk, and people go, ain't worth it, because I don't think anybody has a three-bedroom house, I mean, with a four-bedroom septic design, and you're not about to rip up your yard for, for this, so, okay, all right, anybody have any questions, comments in the audience, there being none, make a motion, favorable action?
Second.
Second, all of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Stay. If we didn't pass this, would they hold up money on us?
Not this one, no.
The MBTA, they would, right?
The MBTA, they would.
So the, the government will, the governor will hold money on us if we don't comply?
If we don't pass it, the state law will take precedence.
More of an opt-in, and you would be, I guess, how the law.
So there's no money tied to this one, unlike the MBTA, then?
No.
Okay.
This one, because it's under section 3, it's.
Yeah, so if we vote at a downtown meeting, um, it defaults to section 7, uh, 760 CMR 71, which means we don't approve it, but if someone walks in with an ADU, we go back to the state law.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, no, I understand how it goes, Jim, it's, uh, but it's just, I just wondered if there's any monies tied to this one, any gun to the head, that's not, I don't like when people do that, gee, who else is doing that we don't like?
So, so where's the final vote?
Four, one, zero.
All right, well, thank you all, um, any questions moving forward, especially as we continue the rewrite, happy to come back and talk to the board about that.
Thank you, sir.
Happy.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Make sure you put that date in there, would you? Okay, reference, to me, that's just a minor thing, doesn't change anything. Okay, uh, all right, let's get rolling, the hour being after 7:20, we have a continued public hearing for Winter Estates, Mr. Glossa.
Heidi Street first.
Heidi, oh, I'm sorry, okay, you can stand there, let's take a second, John. Please allow us a continued hearing for, on April 3rd, and continue to the next April 7th, 17th meeting, this is for Heidi, and they've given us extension through May 31st, so let's first take up the extension, make a motion to allow extension up through May 31st, 2025?
Second.
Second, Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the applicant has requested a continuance without testimony tonight for Heidi, so we'll do that, and this public hearing will be continued to, what we got?
April 17th, 7:15.
This public hearing, didn't get opened, is continued to 7:15 on April 17th, there'll be no notice, just this one, all right, that one done, now, the hour being after 7:20, we have a continued public hearing for Winter Estates, and, John, do we have any comment, updated comments, Kate? Why don't you tell us what, while you're back again, and we'll read what we got, John.
So, uh, for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46 East Street in East Walpole, so I'm here with revised plans, this might actually not show the latest revision, but just so you can see what the proposed roadway is about, it's, you know, we know it's off of Winter Street, it's next to the nearest houses, 215 West Winter Street, which is the house to the left, so, um, since I was here last, um, we made all of the changes, um, that were requested by your town engineer, um, and by a couple of other changes that were, uh, asked for, um, we've received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission for the, um, uh, construction of the roadway, plus for the construction of the driveways and utilities, et cetera, and the two houses on the two lots, um, we received a land disturbance permit from the Conservation Commission for the entire site, because we're altering more than 40,000 square feet, um, we submitted all of the plans and some documents, in the sense that we updated the waiver request list, um, and asked for continuances in a timely fashion, um, we, um, as I said, submitted the list of the latest changes and the, and the updated list of the waivers, and so, I'm just here, I guess, basically, on behalf of, um, Marco Jr. and Daniel Gioso, to ask the board, um, if there isn't anything else, if, um, you know, we could close the hearing, and, and you can vote on it at your, within the prescribed time limit, we got more stuff?
Of course, John, I'll find stuff if we don't have any, all right, all right, from Board of Health, April 2nd, uh, at their April 1st meeting, they voted unanimously to reiterate the comments from January 8th, which they approve of the proposed plan, however, they're not in favor of new construction within the wetlands, it has a longstanding stance on protecting the wetlands and water resources, if the project is approved, there is the applicant, as well as future homeowners, to adopt the best practices for mosquito mitigation, and work with Norfolk County Mosquito Control for spraying and standing water treatments, and institute regular cleaning gutters and grading, the board also reminded the applicant that it's a private rose, and residents are responsible for bringing their trash to the end of the neighborhood, so it can be collected, okay, uh, is this septic, John?
No.
Oh, there's going to be, you can connect?
They're both, both lots are, can be connected to the sewer.
All right, uh, next one, from the Fire Department, March 17th, we find these plans acceptable. A lot of stuff by you, John, uh, from Act Superintendent Jim Thomas, and he reviewed the waiver, while he doesn't have rejection because it's private way, like some trees, am I dreaming, did we talk about this before?
No.
No, we must have had a different one, right?
Yes, it was quail run.
Well, okay, all right, well, they want five trees in the amount of 400 each, so.
Well, whatever the board decides, we're not here to fight with the board, so.
So, he, they said 2,000, if we say like 30, 40,000? He said whatever we.
Whatever the board decides.
Okay.
We're not here to fight with the board.
We'll entertain that while we do the waivers, and down to Kyle.
Mr. Chairman, I delivered a memorandum, March 13th, um, all pre- comments from the previous reviewer addressed, there were two comments on it, uh, the first one, I recommend the Form J conveyance not be required, as all utilities are private, so there should be no conveyance into the town, and the road is intended to be private, uh, and that, uh, second, a private way and mutual maintenance agreement shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to plan endorsement, those documents should be recorded with the plan and decision.
All right.
Think actually, number one, the Form J conveyance is technically a waiver.
Well, we can add it to the waiver, if you.
So you're going to go home and retype it and give it to us, another date?
Mm-hmm.
Remind you, John, um, all right, well, you need the waivers voted, correct, Mr. Glossa?
Yes.
Okay, um, we'll do the waivers, they showed the conventional plan, uh, I'll run down them, unless someone wants to do each one individually, or stop the top one, but first waiver, section 3, 1C8, uh, waiver the requirement of traffic impact and physical impact assessments, anybody have any issues with that? All right, s- streetlights, allow no streetlights, okay, 4, 5E, maximum sun line grade, 7%, wanted to allow it to 8, issue? No, beating up, waiver requirement for soil testing, the proposed street, okay, section 5 dash 1.
We missed one.
What one?
Leveling area.
The what?
Section 4, 5G waiver for leveling area.
4, 5G.
Was it, do I have?
That's coming later on, going on, is, it's on the, this page of John Glossa's.
That's a different order of the plan.
Yeah, I'm going by what, yeah, I'm going by what he has here, um, uh, waiver soil testing, we, standard specification allow it to be, without the strict compliance, are all standards, see waivers requested, 5, 6A roadway allowed to be less than 26 feet, 16-foot wide, and it'd be constructed with an 88-foot diameter turnaround.
Mr. Chairman, that's got to be corrected, it's 20-foot wide.
Yeah, that's, that's what this is going to do.
Sorry about that, I missed that.
It's funny, they always go, they never go like 30-foot, Kyle do, they, they go like s- less, never more.
A waiver to be wider.
Yeah.
It's the old common drive standard.
Oh, but what I'm saying is, it's, the mistakes always seem to benefit one way.
I just forgot that.
Curbs and gutters, sections 5 dash 7, without curbs or gutters.
Oh, we do have, we do have a spit berm, though, right? You asked us that, we do have berm, so you don't need to vote section.
So what you want, no, right now, our curbs in our section are granite.
Right.
So you want to get rid of the granite curbs, that's all.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yes.
The slope granite, you don't need, uh, section 5, uh, dash 8, allow it without sidewalks, 5 dash 9, no grass plots, 5 dash 12, street trees, and a request, and part of that would be that they would pay five times 400 or $2,000 to the town for trees.
Yeah.
And the additional waivers on his sheet, John, that you had, section 4 dash 5G leveling area, to allow it to be constructed with a 2% level on the area for 50-foot, where 1% is required, 4 dash 6, 3C, allow the bottom of the infiltration basically flat with a, where a slope of a quarter inch per foot is required, and 4 dash 6C9, to allow drainage infiltration basically on private property, and partially on lot 2, and possibly the proposed private roadway, right away, all right, those are all of them, now, Kyle, do you have any issues with any of those, they all?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. Chairman, um, and if you were to add the one about the Form J, it would be section 3 dash 14.
Okay, we will add.
What we're trying to do is cross-reference what was printed for waivers in that memorandum with what's on the cover sheet of the subdivision plan, I don't know if that coordination has been done.
Was it section 3, what?
Dash 14.
Dash 14, Form J, do you have that, Kate? Okay, all right, so we have all those waivers, Kyle doesn't have any issues, make a motion to, for the waivers.
I'll just ask one question, so Carl, the, the, the having the ability to put some of the drainage on private property that was addressing the driveway at 215 Winter, the cutoff, did I get that right, Winter Street, remember, there, you raised an issue about the, the cutoff for the street, have it removed?
I have my notes here, it's 215. So, there was a neighbor downstream at, I believe, 185 Winter, um, and their driveway was taking water shortly after the first hearing in December, that was remedied by Highway, um, the proposed driveway, um, or roadway, uh, Mr. Glossa has added a berm along that to keep Winter Street water in Winter Street, so those are the two things relating to water staying where it should be, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And they're on the plans, uh, well, the 185 is fixed, that's not on the plans, but there's a berm on the entrance to that driveway, um, to keep, because it goes down, it, it goes below grade, so there's a berm on the plans shown on that, as we requested to keep the water in Winter Street. No, John, next one.
It's labeled on the.
Right, it is, we got several conversations going on at once, Mr. Glossa, through the chair, of course.
Last to know. It wasn't just Patrick that had listened to you, by the way, when you said that.
Just keep moving, keep moving.
You throw the first gauntlet, I'll fill in the rest of them, so you all said, Kyle? All right, I make up, I have a motion for, uh, for the waivers, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Phil, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so now we're down the brass tacks at the end, John, I have one question.
Yes.
Before we roll, we have to back open to the public, but is there any agreement with Jackie Lee, or just going to wing it some other day?
No, 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 the plan shows, we talked to Jack Lee, and the plan shows the amount, the portion of the pavement, of his pavement of his driveway to be removed and cut back to the property line, or actually a foot or two into his property, so.
I also talked to Mr. Lee, and he understands what's going on and accepts it.
So I'm, I'm sure it'll all work out with.
Well, we cut the neighbors off, we haven't even moved in, all right.
No, but you, you've got two Walpole families who are not going to fight with each other, I'm sure of that, so.
We're at that end of the decision, sure, doesn't matter, he gets last look anyway, telling the pipes are wrong. All right, anybody from the audience?
215 Winter Street, do you have the one?
Yes.
That's what my question was about, I didn't do a good job of asking that, the driveway, with the water, with the driveway.
Okay, um, anybody from the audience have any questions, comments regarding this, there being none, all right, uh, do we have a decision there?
Just, all I need is your special conditions, one of them needs to be street name, I have a.
One of them needs to be street name, I have not heard back.
We have no street name?
I don't know, we...
I don't know doesn't, that's kinda weird, John, come on.
Why?
I don't know street.
No.
I mean, there's been a street name on the, on the plan.
Right, but I need to send it to E911 Fire Police formally with your request for the backup in case they don't take deals away, I wouldn't...
Okay, so if, is there a...
Be a special condition.
Yeah, I mean, we'll get the street, we'll get a street name from the, what's it, E9, E911, gives the street name, right?
Fire Department, Mr. Chairman, that comes from the Fire Department.
Do you like Glossa Trail?
Close.
No? Big dead end sign, Glossa Trail. Alright, alright, so we'll make, special condition one would be, we typically put the waivers as special conditions, Kate? Okay, so the only special condition we'll have, Kyle, right now would be the street, we ought to have the street name in and approved to us before final signature.
And the street tree, and the payment lower street trees.
And the check, too, at that same time. And that, I think that's the only one we had, um, not that matters now, they're gonna bond it, they're just gonna build it.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna build it first, they're gonna bond it, we'll be back for all that?
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say they probably would build most of it and then bond it before they, probably get maybe even to a binder course...
Okay, but they do want...
And then bond it so that then they can build the houses and, you know, let the binder course get beat up a little.
So they can sell the, however they're doing transfer. Alright, can't do any of that till we get a bond.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, alright, so that being none, uh, make a motion to close?
Second.
Second, Kate, all's in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve our winter states?
Second.
Two seconds. Any further discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. There you go, John.
Thank you very much.
You don't want Glossa States? I mean, John Anderson got his name up there with the Tobleros, right?
It'll be coming soon.
Ah, twenty years. Twenty years, okay. With the hour being after 7:25 and 7:26, we have continued public carrying for the southern, 397 Ellen Street, and a continued common driveway special permit, and we have here, uh, all the way down, uh, attached plants, oh, whoa. Kate, I'm trying to figure this out. Does this guy do it all in one email? It starts Kate, blah, 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 then Deputy Chief, and then, is he, he's got a shopping list on this too. Alright, we're requesting continuance of hearing to next available meeting, do they need an extension? They asked one.
Does it need one?
That they don't need it? When are they going to?
Um, April 30th.
April 30th, okay. So, we have a request for continuance for both the subdivision, 397 Ellen Street, and common driveway special permit, so we won't be taking any testimony, and will be continued, and do we have a date and time?
Uh, April 17th at 7:20 and 7:21.
April 17th, 7:20, 7:21, so that's it, so there will be no more notification, so that being said, that one's done, and now, last one of the night. Yay, we have a continued site plan approval for Kearsage 400 Main Street site plan, alright, that being said, we're open and away we go, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let the record show that the town engineer is recused, and the assistant town engineer will be available, Chris Johnson, for technical comments.
Alright, Kate, you put that in the note to let the note, let the notes read that town engineer left early?
Yeah, just using, but the town engineer left early.
Well, I'm telling the truth, not the whole truth.
Wait a second, this is not...
There's a lot of stuff here.
Alright. This is it, just my stuff?
No, this is comments.
Oh, yeah, but this was, this was just, but he already come back and already said that, okay.
This is, but Jack, Jack.
And this is also one model, Kate.
What's it?
Jack, this folder is from the Butters, it's not word comments, but letters from the Butters and some...
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Hi, everyone, Rob Bukowski, Weston Sampson, representing Kearsage. Since the last time we were in front of you, what we've done is update the plans to respond to all the comments that we got from Chris and the engineering department, as well as the Fire Department. I'll just summarize those, we had a note to the first page regarding the zoning bylaw section, we included some additional supplemental information that included the battery, as well as the transformer, which was omitted from the original submittal. Uh, we submitted a decommissioning purity cost estimate, and the size of the vegetated screening was updated to five to six feet, and we've also updated the spacing on the northern side to stagger the trees, and we've decreased the spacing from approximately 15 feet apart to 12 feet apart. Um, and then, Fire Department, we did speak to them about the gravel access road and showed them some engineering calculations that showed it's suitable for the loading that's gonna be required for the site, as well as the fire vehicles. Uh, we included a fire break on the northeast and south side, which is basically a 10-foot wide grass strip that needs to be maintained as mowed, as opposed to the rest of the field where, as we talked about last time, it's gonna be a dual-use project, so the rest of the field will be hayed. Instead of a stand pipe system that we had before, the Fire Department requested that we install a hydrant as close to the array as possible, which was included on the access road, right next to the access road going up. We did make sure that we kept this outside of the riverfront area. Um, we updated the turning plan radius for the fire truck, and then the O and M plan was included, that talked about vegetation management, so. In addition to that, I know we talked about last time, is doing like a mock-up, which was done on the north side of the site, so the county installed some basically wooden mock-ups of the same height, approximately of what the array is gonna look like there. So, that summarizes the updates that we made.
All set? Okay, alright, um, deal with the, the big one first. The last meeting, a lot of concern from the Butters about fire safety and, and so on, so I have, I did my own email to the Deputy Chief, and I said that that meeting on February 6th, we presented, the following facts were presented, the panels would be 11-foot off the ground to allow growing and cutting of hay, the access road would be paved from fisher with batumas to halfway point, then packed with gravel to balance the way. A water line would run the same halfway distance with a hydrant at the beginning of the panels. Solar panels be located within 50 feet of residence to the north on Walden. The panels are controlled by a motor, the project would contain a battery storage area, and the immediate perimeter would also be hay. And what I said is, the night we had, uh, the last meeting, there was concern that the access road to the panels deemed be packed gravel, which is different from what was required on North Street. Uh, there is no access road around the size of panel, just hay in the field. The condition of no access road on hay or grass would be an issue with snow and mud, I also believe a turnaround would be an issue. One hydrant located at the beginning seems very minimal. The neighbor to the north on Walden is most impacted by these issues as their property backs up to the field and is concerned over fire coverage. With the fires in California, everybody's much aware, and they wanna make sure that everything is protected, and please note that the solar farms on North Street, South Street, Norfolk Street have regular grass mowing maintenance, not a hay. This is, this is different, hay's different than regular grass mowing, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's taller, but the other fields don't get mowed like a lawn.
Yeah, but they don't get mowed like hay either, 'cause they're not hay, 'cause you can't, right?
Yeah, the, I guess the other, I'm not too familiar with the other sites, but just the fact that these are elevated significantly higher.
Oh, I understand, but the point is, these guys mow them so they can take a normal mower in there, you guys, you wouldn't, Norfolk County's gonna use the hay thing, they're a whole lot different cutting, that's all, uh, that's the difference that was noted. Um, and it was noted by Kearsage, you can't put the fires out, and only, it can only contain, it's up to local Fire Department to figure it out, which was not the answer everybody wanted to hear that night, and given the lack of 360 degrees, access around the panels with no proper roadbed would be, it would seem containing the panels would be a fire risk, and another issue is since the, this is electrical source, will contain power at all times, and no breaker. Um, the state has encouraged these solar farms to be placed in unused areas such as old landfills, and where there was nothing existent, now we're in a residential area, so that was the biggest reason, and what we get back from the Fire Department is, they had no issues with the plan as presented. So, you know, you sit there and you say everything you can and you get nothing, so, um, so we have that one. Uh, I think this was noted before, is, we have it from Pierce Atwood, and this office represents Kearsage, and we understand there were some questions at the last meeting, and I include your reference, the decision by Mass Court Appeals invalidating the Wapo's zoning bylaws, the extended reports to regulate large ground solar mounted, solar voltaic installations. The court upheld the decision, Land Court, including that special districts unduly restrict solar, Kearsage was entitled to necessary building permits, the appeals court has also declared that this is fine. So, what they've said on this is that we can't zone these out, that's what I read from this, right?
I'm just the engineer.
Well, then, run quick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Kathleen Hyer, I'm an attorney at Pierce Atwood, and I drafted the letter that you have in front of you, and I would say, yes, Mr. Chairman, that is, that is the gist of the letter, that the appeals court said that you, you can't zone these out, although certainly through site plan review there is regulation of the use, but the use itself is permitted.
Okay, well, my issue's been since day one in all this, is they're going under the Dover Amendment, 'cause it's a school. So what's the difference between Kearsage making money up there than me opening McDonald's right on Norfolk County property? Is there any difference?
Um, I assume, I assume there would be, Mr. Chairman, but with respect to the Dover Amendment argument is, the Dover Amendment, section 3 of chapter 48 actually covers a lot more than just the educational municipal daycare, the...
I understand, but is Kearsage, are they part of Norfolk County? Are they independent privately owned that makes money off of this?
They're independent privately owned, the county owns the land.
So, if I wanted right here to put McDonald's on this property based upon the way this is going, I could put it out there and no one could stop me.
I'd, no, Mr. Chairman, because the paragraph nine of the Dover Amendment, section 3, only applies to large-scale solar installations, it doesn't apply to McDonald's. So, that would be a commercial use, that would not be permitted under the Dover Amendment.
I understand the Dover Amendment very succinctly, been doing this a long time, but that doesn't, in, they use, this is a private entity coming there to make money, as opposed, I understand if the county was doing this themselves, I wouldn't have a bitch, but when you enter a private entity in this, that's where the rubber meets the road, and that's what I see here.
I, I understand the concern, Mr. Chairman, and perhaps I'm not being clear, we're not couching this as an educational use under the Dover Amendment, there is a separate exception for large-scale solar developments, and that's, that's the exemption that we're here under.
Oh, no, I, I understand that exemption's there, okay, I don't, I don't disagree that part, but what I'm saying is, now you're into something else, you're putting it on school property, which is now a commercial use.
I, I don't believe there's anything that says we can't do that in the Dover Amendment, we're not coming in as an educational use for this portion, we're coming in because it's a by right use, because the appeals court said that it is.
Yeah, but it's someone's make, it's not a non, it's, this is not a public school, you agree?
I'm not familiar with the school's operations, but yes, I, I take your word for it.
So this is a private entity making money coming in, if the county did it all by themselves, I understand, I don't have a complaint, but they ain't, they got someone coming in. This is the new wave of getting solar places in, which I'm not too fond of, because we got the Dover Amendment enough, and I understand that, but now we're gonna have them just crashing places like all the counties, and separate from what you wrote, I understand that. That's my complaint about this, I don't think it's legal, but anyway, I'll let that one go for now.
Any other questions for me right now?
Uh, does anybody in the board have any questions? Kathleen? No? Alright.
I'll be sitting if you have anything.
We should get the engineer back. No, do we, for you, alright, so you've done yours, uh, does anybody have any questions of the engineer?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, if this is allowed and we can't say no, my question is, what can we do more for the neighbors? So, I feel like the buffer that has been proposed may not be enough, because it's not, these are pretty big, they're pretty tall. Um, and I have been in a couple of homes on Walden over the years, and I've been down Susan, and I can see how it's going to impact their everyday life. Is there anything besides the shrubs that have been proposed? Is there something more we can do?
I'm gonna defer to Kearsage on that one.
Okay.
Sorry, Dan Voss, um, from Kearsage. So the, the trees are substantial, um, the trees have been proposed, and, and they...
Not to be rude and not to interrupt you, so they, they are substantial if the solar panels weren't so huge?
No, they'll, they'll still screen, the, the solar panels are four feet taller than a typical array, so it's not 10 feet or 20 feet tall, or a typical array is gonna be somewhere around eight to 10 feet above the ground, that's a normal array, and, and this is gonna be close to 14 and a half when it's, when it's fully tilted, which is when, which is not typical, it's when, you know, we try to shed snow or something like that. Um, the, the tree screen that's been proposed, um, it's gonna be planted at a height of between five and six feet, you know, on day one, and has a three to five-foot growth rate per year. It's been selected because of its density, it's been staggered during the summer period, based on the photography we have, and, and the information we have, there's already a dense undergrowth and screen shielding those houses, and then we're gonna add a, a row of hedge-like trees along the entire perimeter. We're 100 feet from their, their property line, so 100 feet, so, so, you know, uh, we're not building a two, three, four, or five-story building, it's, it's a solar array, and so the, the, the screen we feel is adequate, given, given the photography that we've probably seen, and, and if you were able to get out to the field, I'm not sure if folks on the board were, but you would see the, the height of the array, we feel that the screen is adequate.
Yeah, and, but a lot of the houses aren't on that level, so we're looking at a ground level, so when you stand on the ground and look at those solar panels, that's one thing, but when you go in the homes, if the home's elevated, it's a whole different view.
But there would be no expectation with any development that if you stand on the second-story window of a home, you won't be able to see...
I'm not talking second story necessarily, I'm talking if you walk up the stairs into the home.
So I believe that the, the trees, the trees grow at 40, 50, 40 to 60 feet in height, and they'd be stacked at 12-foot spacing, uh, the typical span is 12 to 15 feet span, so they'll be fully overlapping, so, you know, within, within two growing seasons, we expect them to be at 15 feet, so if you're standing anywhere in their backyard, you'll be reasonably screened from it, and in fact, if you see anything, it'll be the tip of a panel at 15 feet, and remember, this isn't a, a wall, it's, it's posts with... posts with panels. Um, and then over the following year, you'll have another three to five feet. Within four years, there'll be, you know, 20-foot trees or higher screening this. Um, and so it'll be substantially more than, than typical screening.
So they will grow more than 12 feet?
Yeah, but we've selected, oh, yes. They're, they're 40 to 60 feet in height there. We, we picked the Thujia Green Giants-
Oh, okay.
And they have a low understory, and so they don't shed their understory, so they'll, they'll maintain the low understory. And it was specifically on the recommendation of our landscape architect that we do that. There are other species that will drop lower branches, but these will maintain their understory and will grow in height. And they're specifically designed for this. I mean, I shouldn't say designed for this use, but they're routinely used for this use. Um, and there's quite a lot of photography on the, on the internet that would show the, the effectiveness of this particular type of tree and screening. So we're effectively planting a screened, um, system that's going to reach, you know, well and surely above the height of the panels, and, and I would, I have not done the, we've not entered people's properties to, to check on the topography, um, but this is a substantial screening.
All right. Uh, I have a couple of comments from others, uh, from the, from the board to help. January 21st meeting, they voted 400. They have no comments or concerns at this time. And that was updated by them on the 10th of February to say it still stands, what they voted on. So, we have that. Uh, now, I have a couple of other things from people who may be here tonight, so I just want to make sure. All right. Um, unless, do you guys want to go wait to hear from the people, or you want to do yours now?
No, we're, we're hearing the people.
Wait, okay. All right. First one I have in front of me is from a law firm, and why can't it be named Smith? I E S S I. How do you pronounce it?
Yesi.
Yesi, okay. Have a better chance with your partner's pronunciation. So, what I have, so everybody knows, in front of me is a letter from your firm representing some of the neighbors.
Right.
Okay. Um, I just got one before you get into it. I'm just looking down. Did you really write 1,500-foot buffer?
Yes, sir.
1,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just didn't know if that was a typo. All right, so you, you represent-
And I'm also in Abutter. I live at 12.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I, and I put that in the letter, um, just to be clear for everyone. Um, I did speak at the initial, uh, session when, in the initial, um, meeting last time in February. Um, I guess the concern is from, really from get-go, this whole project has been kind of a moving target. Location, height, size of the project, number of panels. Um, and again, now the height, the kicker is the height and the proximity to all the neighbors here. Um, I would say this project is unprecedented, where it's, it's being placed in the middle of a thickly settled residential neighborhood full of children. Okay? Um, in response, and I, and, and Mr. Chair had a lot of concerns as well, um, I did submit my letter listing some of the concerns of myself and other, of the other neighbors, um, in response to the last hearing. Um, and again, I can provide a copy of that letter to the board, so they have it, um, at the ready there. Um, but, but to summarize, um, this is a nuisance for all, for all the neighbors in the Abutters, um, from both a visual and a noise perspective. The height of the project, it's all you can see. Okay? Um, when they were putting these dummies, dummy wood panels in the back, my wife was in our house looking at them, and they waved at her. Um, so I, I just get a kick out of it that it's 100 feet, it's so far away. Um, she wasn't in our yard. She was in our home, and they could see into our home. When I walk into my front door, I can see those wood dummy panels, okay? I'm not even talking about going to the second floor, because that's just a whole other story. But every inch of my house, I'm going to see those panels. And the folks on Susan Drive and everywhere else are going to have the same issue. Okay? Um, these things are loud. If you've ever been around them, they make noise when it rains. Um, again, it's, it's a nuisance to all the neighbors there. Okay? Um, it's also, and, and we, and I know Madam, Mr. Chair has talked to the fire department. I also spoke to the fire chief. Um, this is a clear public safety hazard here. Um, it is a fire risk. Go. I did speak to the deputy fire chief at length, and I said, a big concern of myself and, and some of the neighbors are, because it's so close, because of the hay, because of it's such a windy area, is really, if they set up perimeter and it's 100 feet off someone's home, is it not realistic, a realistic concern that, that they would not be able to contain the fire and it would spread to the abutting properties? And I, and I'm quoting him here. He said that is a very realistic concern. And again, I'm going to quote that again. Deputy Fire Chief told me it is a very realistic concern, based on the proximity to the Abutters, that they could not contain that fire. Okay? He also spoke to me that the fire code has not really caught up to these things yet. Um, basically what they can do is ensure safety of the construction of the project. Okay? Um, I think they're hamstrung from that perspective. The board has a mandate here. You have a much wider latitude here for the public interest and the welfare of the residents of the town. Um, there's also another very severe safety issue here. This is, there's no security perimeter around these things. The board, the members of Kearsage last time, and Mr. Chair had kind of drilled down on this. If these things become disconnected, these are high-voltage wires that are live. They don't disconnect. They don't trip. Kid's going to go out there, and they're going to play on them, and they're going to knock them down. Someone's going to get seriously injured or killed. So when legal circles end from insurance circles, this is called an attractive nuisance. This is why if I have a pool, it has to be fenced in. This is why if there's a construction site, it needs to be fenced in. Okay? This is an attractive nuisance that is surrounded by neighborhood and, and a high school. And the, and, 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 and the reason they don't want to put a fence in is, is because it makes it too hard to cut the hay. So, I mean, this, the county is trying to have its cake here and eat it too, right? It's okay. The state says, yeah, you can put solar panels in there, right? Okay, well, if you want to put solar panels in there, great. You're going to lose the hay cutting, right? We don't need these things 15, this is, I mean, this is obnoxious. 15 feet in the air. Okay? And we're not going to put a fence up, and we're going to jeopardize any child that lives in that neighborhood. Okay? Because we don't want to put a fence up so they can cut hay. The county's going to make a choice here. Okay? Lease the property, make money that way, or cut the hay. Um, I also submitted a letter to the board from a licensed real estate agent about the effect of this project on the property values here. Um, he said it's not just the immediate Abutters that will suffer a decrease in property values, but the surrounding neighborhoods themselves. Okay? He said the proposed height of the project would have an, would additionally drive fur- further down the property values. Um, there's no need for this project to be elevated. There's no requirement that they, that they be allowed to still cut hay over there. Okay? Um, the school wants to grow grass. They can do it somewhere else. Um, again, for all these reasons, I submitted, I submitted several proposals to the board. And, and again, the 15-foot 100 buffer, again, for the fire hazard that it is. Limit the height of the solar project, again, because it's a nuisance to everybody, and it's not necessary. Um, the, the screening, I, I just laugh at the screening. Okay? Um, we're talking about something that they're proposing, 15 feet in the air. And first it was three-foot trees, now it's five-foot trees. And, and, and I've planted our variety, and we've talked about this all before. What trees are going to grow to that height in a matter of a couple years? It's, it's, it's just, it's, it lacks any common sense. It's just, it just, any credibility that you're going to tell me these trees are going to grow 20 feet in two years? Have you ever seen a tree grow that, that high that quickly? It, it's just, and to boot, the, the mass of, the mass of this project is up in 15 feet in the air, right? It's not, it's not the pole at the bottom that we're worried is, that is, that is, you know, encompassing. It's the panels up top. It's the panels up top. They're, they're four, five, they're eight feet long, right? I mean, um, that's kind of the issue here. I mean, if, they need to be screened properly. They need to be screened fully and immediately. And whatever, and whatever the board decides on the height of this project, the, and, 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 and Ms. Abates said the same thing. It needs to be higher than whatever they decide, right? Because we're all elevated. Again, my wife was on our first floor, not our second floor, when she was waved at by the gentleman from Kearsage. Okay? And again, not in our backyard, in our house. Kearsage is just really pushing the envelope here of really responsibility and decency. Um, the state give them, like I said before, the state gave them an inch. They're trying to take a mile here. Um, I, I also feel like the whole North Street project, they're waiting to do this all, all at once, because the public outcry when these things go up is just, it's going to, it's going, it's going to be shocking. When you tell people they want to put these things 15 feet up in the air, they gasp. Um, and again, it's an unprecedented project. Usually these things are out, landfills out in the middle of rural areas where there's, there's, there's hundreds of homes here. There's, you know, we're talking hundreds of hundreds of people that these are, this is going to affect. Um, you know, also like the liability here. Someone gets killed out there. These things break out and fire. These guys are going to declare bankruptcy and be gone, and the town's going to be left holding the bag here. I mean, a little bit of reasonableness here and common sense. Um, you know, I can't do it, no other landowner is allowed to do whatever they want on their property. There's restrictions for all this stuff. I mean, we just spent 20, 10 minutes listening about what kind of sign I can put in my yard. And we're going to let these guys go and put these panels 15 feet in the air, 100 feet off my property, not fenced in? Someone's going to get hurt or killed out there. Um, as the board is aware, it has a very wide mandate here, and I quote, "to ensure the public safety, interest, and welfare of the residents of the town." Okay? The board has not only the right, but the obligation to restrict this project. The, the project as is currently proposed is a clear and present threat to the surrounding neighborhoods and the public at large. We're asking the, the planning board to restrict this project and require significant modifications prior to any approval being issued. That's all I have, and I'll submit these, I'll submit this paperwork to the board.
Listen to all your points. Uh, well, do, yeah, I got, oh, okay, thanks. You already have them, but take it again. Uh, you brought up a bunch of good points. One of them is, the other one's all fenced in on North Street. The other solar projects we have in town, they're fenced in.
I mean, it's just, it's just, it's-
And they're all in industrial, industrial roll. It's at the end, it's fenced in.
Yeah, it's, it's unprecedented.
Everything's fenced. This isn't. That's a very good point.
It's unprecedented, and these things catch fire. I mean, it was a couple of weeks ago in Canton, there was a fire. I mean, they, they draw heat here. Um, and again, again, they, it's not do whatever I want. Cut grass or put panels in there.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, it is, I agree, it's an attractive nuisance. If I was 10 years old, I'd be out there playing there all day.
And there's a lot of kids out there.
My baseball off the panel, see if I can break it.
Right.
If there's a fence, I gotta walk all the way down, maybe jump the fence.
Right.
So, and, uh, the other thing you said is also true. You know, we just heard from their lawyer that says, you know, you can use, you, you gotta do it. Gun, we got a gun to our head from the state. We don't get a gun to our head to say they have to hay. That's, that's a given. That's, and what you, that, those are the points, so, that I've seen so far.
And again, and again, I know, and I would just, and I know I said this, but I go back to the deputy chief's fire words. A very realistic concern, that any fire that starts there will spread to the Abutters. They're too close to us. They're too close. And again, and now, and we talked about last time, like berms and whatnot, for additional screenings to get those heights up sooner and quicker. But I mean, but it needs to be an immediate, it needs to be an immediate, um, screen. It really does. Not trees, and, and unfortunately, you have to be very specific with them, because as far as like height of the trees, berms, the spacing of the trees, um, because if not, they're just, they, just it seems they're pushing their bounds here, right? And they're going to space them out so far that we're going to see them anyway. All right? Um, but again, the board has latitude here. Um, it's not do whatever you want. They're just hoping for the attitude, and I hear it around town, they're just going to do whatever they want. They're just going to do whatever they want. It's not how it works. Doesn't work for me. It doesn't work for anyone else that lives in town, and it shouldn't work for anyone else there as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a email Wednesday, March 2, from Anthony Pucci. Is Anthony here?
Yep, here.
All right. Do you want, you want me to read it, or you just want to summarize it since you're here?
You can read it. I, I mean, I've been sending as many people as I can my feedback on many of the arguments that, uh, Tom had and, and thoughts on this project. Uh, I think I'm kind of exhausted, but tonight I heard something that was very important that I think you all should consider. It came from the board. It's identity. Identity. I grew up in a surrounding town. When I grew up, Walpole was known as a farming community, but a lot of open space. This project happens, we lose our identity as a town. I just wanted to add that. So you can read that if you'd like, but I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Um, yeah, what you did is you gave us some pictures. I was up there one day, one Sunday, and I was ready to get out of my truck until I got a dog. Was it yours?
No.
You have a dog?
No.
Oh, good. But you can just see right through it now. I mean, it's, you know, it didn't take much. You could drive by on Walden and just see it, but-
Yeah, and you're, and you're welcome to come to my home, see the view that I see, the, the view that Tom sees, and many of the neighbors. You know, the vegetation that they talk about that is clearly there that can block this is, is just a farce. You, you can see that field openly, um, the animal life that, that's out there, the people that are walking through that, that field, that use it for recreational purposes. Um, it happens every day, all day. Um, the new, this thought of the trees covering it along with what they're proposing is just insane. You'll still be able to see it.
No, the, the, the first thing that grabs you is the fact that how flat it is and you, everything. It's not like this is down in a gully or up in the air. It's like a continuation.
I think the picture I sent you is, was off my back deck.
Yeah. Okay. You have, anything else? You all set?
That's, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, and I believe that's all the outside stuff. Anyone from the audience, if you do, please come up. Need your name and address for the record, and smile for the camera.
Smile first. Hi, my name is Himali Patel. I live at 12 Susan Drive. Uh, I believe I had sent an email through the town Walpole website, uh, sharing my concerns and the pictures that I took from my backyard. Uh, I had given them to Kate Delaney. Hi, Kate. Uh, we had corresponded, and I believe you have given the email to the chair and the board?
I believe so.
Is it there?
It was a while ago.
Oh, okay.
I sent it right after the last meeting, because I wasn't able to come here.
Yeah. Yeah, we saw those.
Awesome. Thank you. So I just wanted to add the same support and the, and the words that many people before me have said. I'm not a legal person. I'm a, I work in healthcare industry, so I don't know the lingo, but I do live, and my prop, my backyard is directly parallel to this property that we are talking about, thus the parcel. Uh, if you see the pictures, you'll see there is no, no, um, barrier at all. I see it directly standing in my backyard. And to support and to, um, sort of add to what Tom and, um, Mr. Fauci said before me, I welcome you. Before you make the decision, I please urge you to consider it one more day. You're welcome to come in my house in our neighborhood and see what it looks like from our, our neighborhood. Uh, this project, this unfortunate circumstance, if nothing has really united our neighborhood. As you can see, we have many audience from the neighborhood today, and if I can just have a show of hands of all of us who know each other now because of this project. Like, this has been driving all of us really concerned and crazy, and we feel like we have no other venue but to talk to each other. That just does not seem like it's a fair and a right thing to do. We want you to come to our neighborhood. We want you to see what we are going to live through if this goes, and if you approve this. So before you make any decision, I would request to just pause for, if nothing else, for the sake of our, um, benefit, and maybe we'll feel like at least something was done, and you heard us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? No? All right. Uh, oh, okay.
Marianne Briscoe, 8 Susan Drive. Excuse me. I just wanted to respond to Kearsage's talk about the five, four to five-foot, um, greenery. I'm five feet tall. Yeah, I'm not covering anything, not even the microphone. So, we planted in our backyard the same greenery at about a five-foot level three years ago. It's watered daily during the months. It grew one foot in three years. So them saying that it's going to grow a huge amount, it's not true. And that's us being watered. That's not being watered. So, and that's adding three inches then at that point. So I'm unsure of where they're getting their information in regards to that, but we have that in our yard, and it's not happening. in regards to that, but we have that in our yard, and it's not happening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'll open up to the board for comments. Go ahead, Paul.
I mean, again, what it said, I mean, we've, I feel, you know, that our hands are tied. I mean, the points that are made tonight are, are real. I mean, now, in terms of the sizing that they, we talk about from, we can-
Yeah, our only, and we don't agree with it, but the only thing is, you have to allow solar panels in. That's it. I don't, I don't believe there's anything in the state law that says how high, how many, or da, 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 da.
Okay.
So, and what Mr. Yessi said was 100%, is we're here. Just think of this, Paul, as somebody that's allowed to do this anyway. You know how we move things, this and that. So, we're, that's what our duty is, to make sure everything is looked at like that. We can't, you're not supposed to say no, because we're site planned to a use, because it's allowed use.
Yeah.
But you just, there's a point where you can condition it. And I think that's what was said to tonight.
Well, then, how about the, how about, I mean, how about the limitations of how many panels and the size? I mean-
Yeah, yep.
I mean, who says that they have to do that many?
There's nothing. I'm sure we're going to get a court answer, but, you know, I haven't seen anything to that effect, so.
I, I think that the-
Yeah, we're doing us first. You get your shot. Please sit down, because I'm not going to have rebuttal, 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 rebuttal. I say.
I mean, I have, I mean, you know, then if that's the case, then, I mean, that's what I would want to consider, you know? I mean, size, limitation. I mean, this is, this is absolutely crazy.
All right. Kate?
Well, I go back to, I feel like we have to do something more to protect the neighbors.
Yeah, the neighbors, yeah.
And it wasn't, you know, I hadn't thought about the, it's only been proposed to us as the hay and the height. I hadn't even thought about the fact that that wasn't, didn't have to be part of the project, the hay.
Can I look at a solar-
So, can someone from the Kersage group tell me why the hay has to be, is that just because you were trying to-
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What's the reasoning for the hay?
So, this is an agricultural solar project, so it's been designed and permitted as an agricultural solar project. There's a statewide program that the D O R and the, UMass Amherst has helped develop. It's being placed at the school because the school's an agricultural school. It's going to be part of the programming at the school. The requirement for an agricultural facility to allow sufficient sun access, to allow machinery access, is that be a minimum height. And so what's been put forth is the height and spacing that ensures adequate sunlight and access to grow and operate machinery and continue to farm the land. It's, it's been discussed for, since 2017 or 18. These projects within Walpole, we have moved this project out of the woods where it was invisible, into the field at the request of the community, at the request of many people that are sitting here. I think Chris said, many people are sitting here. There is a, a, an exhaustive website with all of the engagement that has been undertaken over the past three to four years, and the response to community feedback. One critical piece of feedback, as a response to Mrs. Patel, and the concern of the citizens on that side, was that we moved the array an additional 50 feet inbound. So, we were at 100 feet, we moved it to a minimum 150 feet from their property line. And that was agreed in public meeting. We followed through with it. We communicated it. We published it on the Norfolk County website. We moved it 100 feet from the northern boundary, and we limited it because the community had discussed moving it out of the trees, right? So, we had originally expected to clear more trees, or planned to clear more trees to keep it further away from households. And we were asked to move it further into the field. So, so the character design you see in front of you-
One second, just to clarify what you said. Sorry to interrupt you. So, how would you put it in the trees?
Well, that we would have to clear.
So, you'd have to take down trees and make it-
So, we'd have to clear additional trees. So, it was further to the south originally. We moved it north to minimize clearing. We maintained a 100-feet separation. We've put in a screening system that is in excess of anything you'll see around a solar facility in this area, in terms of the tree screening, the height of the tree screening. Where, where, under your bylaw, there's a limitation on the height of the panels. There's no limitation on the number of panels, on the spacing of the panels. There's only a limitation on the height under your existing bylaw, under your guidance. Just with the building, you know, there, there are height limitations. We have a height limitation with the current guidance that the planning board pushed out that limits it to 15 feet. We're at 14 and a half feet with the tilting system. It's 28 feet from post to post to allow access for vehicles. It's 11 feet at the pivot point to allow access for farm machinery, because this is a working property. It's a hay production field for the county, for the Aggie School. They have animals they feed with the hay. They sell excess hay. It's part of their program. So, this, this project was conceived with the agricultural school. It is the Aggie Schools and Norfolk County's land, where substantially further back than the setbacks are required for a solar facility. And we've proposed a significant screening program with these arbovidi, specifically selected because there are a wide range of arbovidi, specifically selected because of their growth rate, their height, and their, and their thickness, their width. So, it's called a green giant, specifically used for screening because it's accelerated growth. And the height of the plantings is based on ensuring, giving them the best chance to survive and grow, given the disruption that occurs during planting. We've responded to all of the comments made by the fire department. They have reviewed their approach to fire response, and, and they have vehicles designed for brush fires and field fires. And our design has been adjusted or checked against that, and we've included this 10-foot mowed fire break around the system to enhance their ability to respond. And I don't question any conversations that have been had. I wasn't there, but I can say that, that we've engaged with the department prior to our conservation commission hearing, and on multiple occasions to ensure that what we were doing was in line with their fire response planning.
Do you have anything else, Phil?
No, I just, yeah.
Phil?
Yeah, so, so could you show where the fence is going to be? There is some fencing.
There is a fenced area around the, around the battery system and the transfer, the medium voltage equipment per NEC code. The array is designed and will be approved by the building department and the electrical inspector, and will be per the NEC code, the national code that ensures that it is safe electrically and does not present a fire hazard. And it's consistent with, well, it's consistent with existing technology and existing design. The height of the array is such that a fence is not required around it. It was a request by the agricultural school that we do not fence the area, but that was consistent with the design. Now, the, the land is the county's land. They have not fenced their land to stop people from going on it, because it is county land. It's not public land. It's county land. But they have not fenced that, so people can access the land. However, however, the array, from an NEC standpoint, is designed to be electrically safe at that height, so it does not require a fence.
So, so if, so that's why there's no fence, because if they were the-
Because it's 11 feet in the air.
The normal ground-mounted arrays we see-
Normal ground-mounted array would be three feet off the ground.
That would require a fence.
That would require a fence, yep. And the reason this doesn't is because of the 11-foot height. But it still has to meet all the, it has to pass the review and meet the requirements of the National Electricity Code, the National Fire Code, and it has to be reviewed by the engineering department and approved.
Now, as far as the vegetation of the arbovidi, so the green giant, and I know they can grow fairly fast. I have them, by the way, and I fight. I fight them a little bit. But will you come back and make, you know, sure that they're, they do have the appropriate screening?
We'll be owning and operating, yes, we, we will own and operate the project. We're a owner-operator of the assets we build. We don't sell them. So, as part of our agreement with the agricultural school, but also, you know, it can be conditioned as part of this permit, you know, we will ensure the growth and success of those, of those trees, and we do that on every project. If we have implemented a screening program, if a tree dies, we replace it. We, we, we maintain it. And, and it's also going to be part of an active farming area, so, so we'll have plenty of eyes on it.
And I ask because certainly the growth of trees will depend partly on the soil, the, you know, there's a lot of other factors. I would imagine it might be a while until the roots are really established.
Established, right.
So, so maybe it might not be five feet that first year, or three feet.
Right, right. That's an average growth rate, right.
So, you know, just, you know, speaking to the neighbors, I mean, that seems to be their biggest concern, one of the biggest concerns is the, the screening. So, to give them some assurance that, that if it didn't work out, something else could be done, or?
Well, I think it's, it can certainly be conditioned upon us, upon us maintaining the tree screen and, and maintaining its, maintaining it through its growth cycle. I think the trees, as you know, are designed to grow to a certain height.
Right, yeah.
And, and so, we'll, we'll be responsible for ensuring that the conditions are sufficient for it to grow.
And my other question is, so if, so if it wasn't an agricultural project, you would have just done lower-
Correct. If it wasn't an agricultural project, we would have, you know, the, the lower edge of the panel would be three feet off the ground, and we'd have a fence around the whole thing, and we'd be, it would be fenced off from anyone's use.
And I know UMass Amherst is at the forefront with Cornell on doing, you know, combining agriculture with solar panels.
Correct.
Which actually has a lot of benefit for farmers.
Yes, yes. And this will be, this will be an important, an important part of their study and their program, because it is part of the Aggie School, and because it will be monitored on a routine basis within an academic setting.
Some clarification to start with. The panels, you said are 11 feet off the ground. Is that the pivot point?
The pivot point, correct.
So, what's the maximum height and the minimum height?
Yeah, so I think it was seven, it's in, it is in the plan set, but it's, I believe it's seven and a half at the lower edge and 14 and a half at the top. When it's at, it's maximum pitch, which would be if it was stowed, if there was a snowstorm or something like that.
Seven and a half minimum and 14 and a half maximum?
Maximum. That's, that's when the, when it's angled like this, correct.
Would you put them flat overnight?
Uh, well, they would, they would typically be stowed, so, I mean, they would not need to be flat. But if we were harvesting, they would be flat, because that maximizes the clearance under each, each side of it. But the range that they'll pivot during the day is just dependent on the angle of the sun.
But do they go lower at night, or when the sun goes down, or?
Um, I mean, we, we can stow them in any position, yeah, yeah. But the, the stowing position would be based on what's the safest stowing position, yeah.
The northern border of the solar panel field, where some of the vegetation will be planted, is there any height variation there, or is that just flat ground?
The, the field is, is effectively dead flat, yeah.
Okay. Is the current area all cleared right at this point?
Yes. Well, the, 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 we will be clearing about two and a half acres down here by the, by the log dump. If you have a look on the plan set, you can see an area in here that will be cleared.
Okay.
It's about two and a half acres.
So, most of it is already cleared then?
Yes, it's all, it's all cleared and it's currently being hayed.
It's currently hay?
It's currently hayed, yeah. So, it's current use as a, as a hay field. They do two to three cuttings per year, depending on the growth season.
I have a question for Ms. Briscoe, if she's still available.
Yes.
Uh, what, could you review the height you had on your trees?
They were five feet when they were purchased.
Come on up to, you gotta get PSO, it will be on TV.
They were five feet when they were purchased, and they have grown about a foot.
Over what period of time?
Three years. With watering from, like, March to-
Three and some months.
And what kind were they?
They were reed giants, reed giants. Green giants, it's green.
Good job. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we have a theoretical growth of three to five feet annually, but we also have a practical growth of one foot.
Well, and-
From someone who borders the properties, who's got the same soil as this.
Well, to be, to be, to be fair, the, the, the sun aspect is also going to have an effect. And so these will be on the northern end of the field with subtly sun throughout the day. It's, it's a currently plowed and fertile, and, and, it's a currently plowed growing field, and so it's used for agricultural purposes, and it's used for growth. So, if, if the trees are planted without, the, the, the conditions can be varied for these trees. And so, so the, the stated growth rates, average growth rates are three to five feet. So, there will be variances around that.
Of course, there'll be variances from tree to tree.
Right.
But also, the soil, your property and the soil at their property is likely to be the same soil. So, you, while a little more sun-
Unlikely if it's been developed and, and, and over time, but fair call.
I think the three to five feet is an overestimate based on local conditions. Next point. Do you, Mr. Chairman, what's the latest comments we've had from fire department?
He sent it in, I think he says, yeah, there it is.
Well, that's the latest, is that the latest one there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, is this his comments? No, well, it looks like the comments included here are, so this is all-
This is the answer of Jack's email.
This is the answer in Jack's email. Okay, thank you.
He'd already had previous ones to us, so I brought up additional that were done at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, but this doesn't address the comments made by Mr. Yessi? Is that the right name?
He's, as far as he's concerned, he's all set. The chief.
The chief is all set.
FBI chief, yep.
The, the letter from the fire department did address the concern regarding fire propagation on the side. It was one of the questions that the chair sent, and the letter to the board from the fire department addressed that question.
Um, not yet. You have to wait your turn.
I come next. Because I, I got the gavel, and I can't even talk here. Come on, guys.
Where's the big gavel? Isn't it that?
So, there was a, a response that's contained in our submittal, which is, which is addressing the concerns that were raised by a letter in the last meeting. But then there is the response from the, the most recent response from the fire department to the board-
Yes.
-that reviewed our plans and addressed the concerns regarding the, you know, fire response and management on the side.
Um, not, not this, not having this one built at this point in time, how common is this style of solar array compared to a typical ground-mounted one?
Um, they, they've been progressively developed over the last, I would say, five to six years in Massachusetts, since the program was rolled out to allow for agricultural solar. It took a number of years for it to get to the point where they were being built, just because of the permitting process and the, and the technology- because of the permitting process and the, and the technology development. But agricultural style arrays of this sort of, are becoming more common in, in areas around the state, and from a technology standpoint, they're widely used in Europe and other areas of the world where it's, it's a requirement that they build agricultural arrays.
So it's not a new technology so much as a new application?
Correct.
Okay. You said some of these have been built in other locations of the state. Have they been built this close to residential areas, or are they more likely to be in a field on a farm that's separated from most other residential sections?
I, I couldn't answer that specifically. I can answer the question in relation to traditional solar farms. I can, I can answer the question in relation to traditional solar properties that, that are, that are as visible, and, and they are in many cases built with this proximity to residents, in fact, 50 feet is the typical offset from the boundary for these.
So the solar panel hay combination has, that, you've been, been worked on for a number of years, has it been put into practice?
Yes.
Have there been any issues with the previous combination of that, that combination?
In what sense?
Well, hay as opposed to grass is going to be much more flammable, so fire is, you can think is more a possibility. Has there been any instances like that in other similar sites that you're aware of?
I, I could not answer that, but, but I, I would have to defer to another expert on whether a hay is more flammable than traditional grass, they cut it green and, and bale it and dry it. So it's, it's dried on the ground, laying on the ground, it's not dried as it's growing.
And the plan right now is they will be cutting the hay at the same timing as they're doing currently?
Same rate, yep.
Okay, there's another issue, I think it's been brought up in the last one, the locust map is supposed to be one inch equals 200 feet. I know there were comments, but the one inch equals 2,000 feet, totally useless as far as I'm concerned. You need something so you can see the plan and see where it's located within this portion of town. I need something more than one to 1,000.
So I guess, yeah, Rock can address that, it was a question we put to the Engineering Department.
Now, if you can't, I know there was some comments made that it wouldn't fit on the plans, really.
Yeah, that was the, I mean, the scale...
But I think looking at this, that, you have to have something, even if you can't do one to 200, you can do one to 500, one to 250, or something closer to the one to 200 that we require.
Yeah, the, the scale that we use is pretty typical, we did run that by Chris, just saying that if we were to use what is listed, it would take up a whole nother sheet, so.
I have to say that what's here doesn't work.
You're, you're looking at an 11 by 17 plan.
True. Okay, well, I'm gonna clarify, that's a good idea. Better?
Yep.
It's still not really big enough. I'm still in favor of larger scale.
You got the 2,000 here.
Well, a smaller scale then, something that you can see the side streets that are going to surround, border the project. And I guess that's my comments, Jack.
Okay.
Jack, could I just clarify one thing?
Hurry up, Phil, because I haven't had a shot.
I'll make it very quick. So I think as far as the arbovidi, I think, I'm not an expert, I think we, if you, you know, and I know that when, when we grow trees, they, it took a while for the roots to establish, so I wouldn't, so, but I, I wouldn't be want to speak as an expert, and I think if we really wanted to have an expert opinion, we should maybe go to our, our street warden or something.
Yeah, tree ward.
And tree ward, and have, have them...
Or conservation.
Yeah, give, give, give an opinion.
Okay.
And, and we did review this with conservation, and the tree question was a topic of substantial discussion at conservation, and what you see is actually an enhanced solution, we've reduced the spacing between the trees and increased the number versus what conservation required.
Okay. I got my comments, one that, you know, it's kind of hard to get me riled up, that the Aggies been very good to the public. No, it hasn't. Been here all my life, no, they haven't. Pretty much kept people from Waukau out, all right? My own personal experience, had an office condo at 420 Main Street, and they used to take over that field that was part of my condo complex. Would park cars for Little League, they'd kick us out. So I don't want to hear, and the same thing with the baseball fields, they've never been friendly to this town. They've never said, "Come on in, use our fields, use this, use that," so that, you haven't been around, but when you said that, you really ticked me off on that one. Absolutely, positively, no. That's why we're getting this, they're basically going this to us forever. I don't know how you write that down on notes, but, now...
It would be F U.
Yeah, big one. Now, why, since hay is so wonderful, why isn't it done on the other one?
It is.
They're not up this high?
That's not being built as an agricultural array, but that, that field has been hayed historically, and we've built it on the downslopes.
No, I understand you can hay, but why, if this is so wonderful, and it's done in Europe, and keep Europe out because they get their own freaking problems, why isn't it done up there?
We've, we've, we've left, what, what was intentionally done with the North Street Field was to leave the most productive hay area available for haying, and we've built the array on slopes.
Yeah, but you can grow hay on slopes.
More problematic, but we've built the array on the downslopes.
Yeah, but there's grass growing there now, and they hay it anyway, so...
It's continuing to be hayed.
So we just found another thing. Now, you said something about UMass and all that wonderful stuff, is that, is that they're developing this, whoever else, is there a law, is there something to that, or does this just sound good and we're going to do it?
It, it's a state program.
It's a state program, so it's not a state law. I just got through doing an A D U, telling us we got to do this, so I'm about done with the state government. So this is a volunteer?
It's, 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 it's not a requirement.
Okay, it's not a requirement, so we got that. So you're doing this because you, because the, the school wants to, not because they have to?
We're, we're developing it in concert with the school and with Norfolk County per, you know, program.
Yeah, I understand, but we don't have a gun to our head on this particular one, whether, we don't need hay, I mean, it's not required.
The school and the county made a decision, they want to...
I understand what they did, you know, they want everything, it's like, I'd want it too, but, you know, it's not a requirement.
It's their land.
I, once again, it's their land, but we have people around there, so gee, why don't we just put it in the worst spot, but, so, I got that through. I just want to make sure if this thing goes sideways, that I don't want to have us in a lawsuit because we interpreted something wrong, but you pointed out to me, it's a program. That's fine. The other one is, what I don't, here's one about maintenance, I know with hay, you might get two cuts a year, maybe three, but the other places we have around here, everywhere you see is cut for maintenance so they can get there, so you're talking, guys are going to have to drive through that, so it might be a little maintenance problem. Now, you said this is going to be the best around for, for shading or, or trees, you made that statement earlier.
No, I, I, what I, I think what you're referring to is that the design of the system is designed to enhance the growth of the hay or any crops that...
No, not, but, no, what we were talking about was the arbovidi is whatever you're putting around it, you said it's going to be the best one around.
Yeah, I, I said that the level of screening that we're putting in place is consistent with the level of screening that you would see on, on any solar array in this town.
Okay, do we, do you have any of those that you can say or show pictures of, or what it's going to look like?
I, I can, well, there is, there is, the, the, the screening trees, I'm sure the, the commission has, and the board has seen screening trees on many developments, so it's going to be sort of that.
If you go up...
Phil, please, you pointed out that this is done other places, just like a politician, I get a lot of calls, just name one. So you just said this is done everywhere, do you have something you can show us? It says, "Here it is in 101 Main Street, you know, North Hampton, Mass." Do you have anything to that effect?
I'd be happy to find a, a system that has arbovidi planted as tree screening.
Well, I think that would be good, because now the people can see what, what's been done and what potentially can be done.
Yep.
All right. All right, now, you talked about, when you flip them back and forth, that...
I would say though, that, that, I, I, is the question related to whether or not arbovidi can act as a tree screen?
But you indicated that this will be one of the best compared to others, well, could we have, can I have something to compare it to? That's all.
Is the, do you have a, do you have a, I think you have a, a solar array at the landfill?
Yeah. We have a solar, we have a solar array at the industrial, oh, that's wonderful, it's the industrial road, all you see is fence, you go the one you can't see that Bird has, and back off an Offark Street, that's in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, so I think that the screening, my point was...
But what you indicated sounded like there's some other place in the state that would, it's going to look great compared to that one. Do you have any one we can judge?
I, I'd be happy to get you photography of plenty of arrays that don't have any screening whatsoever, and show you one that has screening.
No, how about the ones that do, that you proposed?
What I'd stated was that the level of screening that we're putting up at this array with, with the arbovidi is going to exceed most of what you will see.
But do you have one where you've done this before?
Yes, we have, we have projects where we've screened with arbovidi.
Okay, well, could you send those to us?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's all we're, we're asking. The hay is not a requirement, we talked about...
When you say that hay is not a requirement, I'm not sure I understand your point.
It's not illegal.
The, the Aggie has every right to, to hay the field.
Yeah, I know, and we have every right to restrict what can be on that as a site plan.
Well, I think your, your, your rules actually don't restrict how many panels you can have on an array, it has a height limitation.
No, but there's a lot of things we can restrict to, without a doubt. Now, fence, no fence, is that what you're saying?
There's a fence around the...
I understand, around the, you got to have it there, but there's no fence around these systems.
By design.
By design, so you could just take your little bicycle if you're a kid and come right off of North Street and have at it around the panels.
The lack of a fence was actually an important point in our community meetings, because the community wanted to have access to the running trails for cross-country, they wanted to have access to the existing trail for the hayride, and they didn't want to be restricted in the use of the field. And so the lack of a fence is one of the items that was on, in recorded meetings, was one of the items that was questioned and answered in those meetings with the community that lives around that site.
Okay, and, I'll be a little wise guy, what legal status does that have with us?
No, no, I'm just pointing out...
Yeah, I know, but it has, it has zero. But, so there's no fence?
There's no fence.
Is it because of that, or they just want to spend the money?
It has nothing to do with spending the money, it's the fact that it's an agricultural array.
Now, let me ask you another question. Who, say, I'm a little kid going in there and I got hurt, who holds the insurance on that, is that the Aggies?
The K S H will have insurance related to the array, and so we, we carry insurance that, that relates to the operation of the array.
Operation, but if a kid runs into a panel, and the panel's going to sue, who are they going to sue, you, or are they going to sue the Aggie?
Everyone.
Yeah, so, so, under the agreement with the county, we have insurances for the array.
But they have, I...
I'm not an insurance expert.
You just keep going around like, okay...
I'm, I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm answering...
I'll go, I'll go to my final one.
I'm answering a question, Chair, which is there is insurance.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, it's, it's, yeah, you're not the insurance expert, but my point, where I'm going with this is very simple, and I heard it before from, from the attorney there, it's the attractive nuisance. Over here at C V S Plaza, they didn't want to put a fence up, but they moved their front door. You've got attractive nuisance there, guys, kids are going to go in the front door, now they'll be 20 feet from the railroad tracks, so they put the fence up. So this will be attractive nuisance for any kid, but where I'm going with the insurance, as we all know, municipalities are limited to $100,000. So if a kid gets really hurt, best he's going to get out of the county is 100 grand. So would it make sense to put a fence up?
The, the, it's an agricultural array, so putting a fence up restricts the ability to actually use it as an agricultural array.
How does this, I don't understand, if you're doing it there, you're going to mow right along?
Because around the perimeter of this, the entire perimeter of this, the vehicles need to turn and circulate.
Yeah, but you've got enough room to put a fence there.
It, it's, it's not, it's not a requirement, and, and, as I said, in response to the community feedback, we assured the community that we would not be fencing off this field because it was an agricultural array. It was originally proposed as a standard array, fenced, that would have cut off access to these field areas. We came back with the proposal as an agricultural array based on community feedback, so that it could continue as a dual-use project, continue to be hayed and continue to be accessed by the community.
Do you have any stuff you can show us that that was said?
Norfolk County has, has a, a...
Can we get it?
...history of presentations and, and answers and questions raised at the community meetings that can be accessed by the public and anyone here.
So in other words, I asked for it, but I got to go on their website. Cooperation here is unbelievable. Now, the other thing was asked, and it's not a big deal, but they talked about moving the panels, do you have to be physically on site to do them, or can you do those remotely?
No, that happens remotely.
All right, and how long does it take to move them?
They would track over the course of a full solar day, so it would move very slowly over the course of eight hours during the day.
Yeah, so chances are you're not doing them every night?
They, they move every day.
They do, but you're not, you're like this, you're not going to put them back down to flat every night?
They, they rotate through their full cycle every day, it's, it's...
But they're not going to stop at flat at night?
I'm not sure where you're going with the question.
Well, the question was, Phil asked, where are they going to end up at night, you're going to put them down, which would be like this.
The, the, the stowage of the panels at night, if I, if I could understand the reason why you're asking, can be set by us, but the, the panels track during the day.
No, I understand how they work during the day.
We can set where they stow, yes.
So there's enough time, that's all I'm coming from a engineering standpoint, if you're going to like this, you're going to miss the sun if you don't, if you have them flat all night.
I'm not sure I'm following.
All right, I'm a panel.
Yeah.
Sun's coming up, how long does it take to get in position where it's optimal?
Well, it's, 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 it does not take, it does not take long, it's going to track to the point where we need it to be, it's, it's a, it's a motor we can...
I know, I understand, I'm just saying, if you're going to put something away at night, how long does it take it to get back to the position it needs to be? What I'm trying to determine, whether, this is going to be flat from dock, dusk to dawn, that's all, I think that was the question.
It would be minutes to...
Okay, that's all, I just, just wanted to know, this thing could go, this isn't like forever then?
It's going to move like that during the day, but if we have to move it...
No, I understand how you do it during the day, but if you've got it flat, you can go at any time, all right.
Noise.
We've got the maintenance, so we, and we, the buffer, I'm not too keen with that, and the fence, and that height, all right, that's pretty much...
I have something.
We have, okay, Kate has one.
So, for maximum growth associated, I just Googled it, maximum growth associated with the arbovidi, they need regular watering, especially during dry periods, do you have irrigation planned for this?
The, the plants are maintained and watered during their initial rooting period, so typical approach is to have bagged water on the, on the plants, and then the, the contractor will come out and replace those when they're depleted.
So no irrigation?
No, that's irrigation, it's, it's individual tree level irrigation, it's very standard in the, in the landscaping industry.
Is that forever, or just the first?
During the, during the, the initial growth period before they can be sustained.
Must be a European...
They will grow to 50 or 60 feet high in time.
Yes, yeah.
There's no doubt that they will.
There's no question that these will be...
In time.
If they're watered. Well, they could grow three feet a year, or whatever.
Okay.
And then, so the hay, we keep coming back to the hay, with the array, the size of the area that's being paneled, isn't there enough other area remaining that they could hay elsewhere?
The, the purpose of this is to be a agricultural hayed field to demonstrate the agricultural solar concept.
I completely understand the purpose, I'm just trying to find a middle ground, so it's a situation of, I understand what you guys are trying to achieve, but I also understand that the neighbors are impacted, and they're trying to achieve something.
Right.
So I'm, I'm asking this from that standpoint, I understand what your purpose has been established, I'm just asking, is there enough area elsewhere that you could hay elsewhere rather than making this a hay project?
So, if, if the question is, could we, can we move it elsewhere on the campus?
Not the solar arrays.
Right.
The hay gathering.
Right, so the, 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 the project itself and, and moving it forward is, is as an agricultural project, so, 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 it's one, it's one, exactly, it has to be hayed for it to be an agricultural project.
And then you mentioned, my last question, sorry... And then you mentioned, my last question, sorry. My last question, you keep saying that it's a, the program, and it's a UMass, you know, UMass came up with it, so are there, is it just for knowledge or is there more associated with it? Like, is it, is it financial incentives? Are there rebates? Is there something else linked to this other than just the education aspect?
Well, I mean, so, so the, the program is designed to show that you can continue to make money from the underlying land while you also have solar generating revenue as well. So that's the, that's the purpose of the program, to show that you can have dual use, and the second use apart from the solar is, is the commercial farming, I should say, the productive farming of the land underneath the array. And so, so, so yes, the revenue from the hay and, and the, and the reduction in cost associated with haying that field is part of the analysis that the DOER reviews when they approve these projects. And the state has reviewed this project specifically and, and a large amount of work was put in by the agricultural school in developing up a very comprehensive plan that, that shows that this will be a profitable use of the land in that it will have the solar and the haying.
And is it linked to like tax rebates or grants or anything like that?
Well, the, the, this particular project, it, the incentive program, so the state program has a solar incentive associated with it, and so there's one specific to agricultural solar, as is, there is one specifically for canopies, one specifically for ground mounts.
Is this part of the smart, the state's smart program?
Yeah, the state's smart program, yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
Can I ask, what is, you, you keep saying, you know, so this kind of, you know, it's a plan, it's an agricultural, okay, it's monetarily benefit, what's the smallest that could go?
What's the smallest?
Yeah, I mean, have you had smaller farms? Because again, you know, I mean, you know, we can't, you can't attack the height, right, because the height's in compliance. So let me ask you something, you know, how, how do you, how do you limit that?
Well, it's already been limited because it was, from a size standpoint, when we had it in the, when we had it, you know, in, in the, in the woods, it was a larger array, so it was reduced in order to build it in this fashion because there's a far wider spacing between the rows. And so it already has been reduced in response to community comment that had been coming back regarding the original location.
But, but again, is, is the intent to show that you make money from this?
Well, the, 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 the project is being built by us, and so there's a minimum viable size for us to build it, and, and so, so building a smaller project is not viable. And we've been through an interconnection process with the utility, and we've been through a process with DOER to get it permitted, and so, so shrinking it in size is, is not viable as a project.
So that's kind of really the issue?
Well, I think that's true of any project. It's true of any real estate project, it's true of this project, there's a, there's a size at which it's viable. We could build it larger, so we could build it larger, but we're not. So it is at the minimum viable size.
I'll go back to what I've asked, is there any of these right now in operation?
Is there any, sorry?
Is there any of these type in operation?
Yes, there are.
Can you give us examples, where, what?
I, I can't off the top of my head, but I can provide you with, you know, a list of all of the approved agricultural arrays and those.
I don't care the proof. Proof means nothing.
And those are in operation, I can, I can provide you with a list of those in operation.
Yeah, I want to see pictures of what it looks like, how it goes, so that, to me, if I was presenting this, that would be part of my presentation, but to me, it doesn't bode well for my presentation, I ain't bringing it. So I would like to see those, where these are, and, you know, what town, whatever, the towns and, and how this works, because there's something different. Well-seen solar panels on landfills, but something like this we haven't seen.
I know on the UMass webpage, I know, I did, I did some searching because I was intercurious myself, and Cornell has a lot of, has a program, and they, you know, they advertise, actually, there's a farm that they highlight in Western Mass.
Correct, yeah, and we can provide, we can provide photographs of these in operation.
Now, and what I, where I'm really driving at is, have you done this on any other Aggie properties throughout the state?
No, this is the only property we're working with the Aggie on.
All right, so is this, do you know if this has been done on any of the other county properties or Essex?
Couldn't answer that, no.
Okay, I think this was asked before, but I just ask it anyway. Your contract with these guys, what's the, is it 20-year?
It's a 20-year contract, yeah.
So they, can they terminate at any time?
There are, there are, there is a, there is a decommissioning bond associated with, or a decommissioning letter of credit associated with this, so that if it's terminated, there's money there for it to be removed if we don't remove it.
No, no, what?
There, 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 it's a standard contract with termination clauses.
I'm not so worried about you guys because you're in the business to make money, all of a sudden someone in the county says, they're gone.
There, there are.
Because that's where it becomes a problem, this thing just would go off into never, never land.
If, if the contract was terminated by either party, it would have to be removed.
Oh, so they can't bring in someone else?
You were saying if they terminate, you weren't worried about us, you were saying if the, if the county goes.
Yeah, you're here to make money, I understand that, and all of a sudden the county, someone gets on the board and says, hey, my brother-in-law's here, we want him to do it now, can you be booted?
No.
You can't, so you have a deal. The only way determination can happen is by agreement by both parties.
Correct, we have a contract in place and it's publicly available.
So they can't kick you off, all right, because that's.
The lease was, I think, included in the original package that was circulated.
On February 6th meeting, it was said that it's a 20-year contract, and either the county can buy them or make them take them down at that point.
Okay, because I would be concerned if you guys are out of the picture, what happens, that's all.
Yeah, so there's a decommissioning surety that's in place just to ensure that, I believe that was included with the engineering.
All right, well, I beat almost a dead horse, but I see some people want to come back up for one more round, and so.
Yep.
I guess, just, just a couple of things on, on just that topic there, so does that mean if, for whatever reason, the subsidies that these companies receive to stay profitable go away and they go out of business, does the county then require them to remove that equipment?
That's what it seems to say, there's like some type of bond, a decommissioning bond on these.
We questioned that in, at the last meeting that came before us, we questioned that quite a bit, and they said there was a bond, and one of the questions was, if at the end of the 20 years, are they, could it be abandoned and you're left with, you know, solar panels that don't work and look awful?
I'd look into the bond.
And they said, no, they, they said it, that it, I agree, but they said that, no, at that point, either the county buys them or they have to remove them.
They got to give us the bond as part of the deal.
I would, I would look into that bond because I understand there's a state investigation that's open right now on this project. So if you haven't been aware of that. It's, there's an open investigation.
Regarding?
Regarding the building of this project and some findings that were considered unethical.
The only thing I get concerned about knowing a little bit about bonds myself is, yeah, we can decommission it today for 50 grand, 20 years from now? I don't know how that would, do they have those automatically go up, Kate?
I was writing, say that again.
If I get a bond, right, and decommission it today, it's 50 grand, 20 years from now ain't going to be 50, because everything goes up. Do they have bonds that keep stepping up and keeping up or not?
It would be priced again every year, like, yeah.
Yeah, but is anybody going to tell them? Doesn't it take the applicant to say, this is what it's going to cost me?
Yeah, it would take.
I'm not going to tell you it's going to cost 100 grand.
Like, if they needed more, someone, the town would tell them, or the county would tell them, you need to increase it to X, someone has to, yes, I'm sure, they're not going to do it by their good grace, I'm sure someone would need to tell them how much they wanted, and then, yes, they would be required to increase it, it wouldn't just increase on its own.
I would just, again, take that into consideration when you're making your decision that there is an open investigation. Also, the last question I have regarding this talk about the panels moving, I'd like to understand what kind of noise that makes, because if you're talking about multiple panels that cover a nine-acre or eight-acre area, what's the magnitude of that sound coming against the Abutters' homes?
All right, I'll ask, what's the decibel level?
I almost feel like we need a field.
The, the, the noise from the system is going to be inaudible from the boundary line.
But what is, okay.
It's not, it will not result in any increase in noise level at the boundary line, so the, the, the motor on, on this to, to move a panel is moving at such a low speed, and it's a DC motor, it's going to be inaudible.
All right, so you're telling me there's, the decibel level is zero?
The, the decibel level at the boundary line?
No, at the motor.
I can't tell you standing at the motor, but I, what I can tell you is.
Can you provide, these people want to know, here it might be 15, and 20 feet away it drops, we need something to know.
I could provide an estimate of the, of the decibel level at 50 feet from the motors because none of these motors are going to be within 200 or, none of these motors are going to be within 50 feet of the boundary line, so I can, I'll look at a 50-foot distance from the motor and.
Okay.
Yeah, but remember, it's a, it moves with the sun, so it's not something that's going to be wearing it.
Yeah, then it goes to bed at night.
Just to add to that, though, that's great that we know what the decibel is for one motor, but just think of the magnitude of that property size and how many motors, the noise that that collectively is going to generate.
Now, that's what we, we should be getting from that. I guess he doesn't.
Hi, I just want to, for the record, be very clear and state the fact, we have been with these meetings with Norfolk County for at least last four to five years. We have, the community here has attended every single meeting. There was never a one instance where we agreed to this with a condition or said that we would like it to be moved from the woods to this. We have never agreed, we have never accepted any condition from them, we have never been understood, we never have understood why they are putting it in the middle of the residential area, and they have never listened to any questions or we have posed so far. So, for the record, it is not based on community feedback, as we have heard multiple times today, it is based on their own interpretation of what they think we are telling them, it is not what we have told them. And for examples, like, I know, thank you for asking where else this has been done, and we would like to see those, I would request that that be shown in a residential area. They have, they may have these arrays and these solar panels on roadsides and on industrial parks, that's not the comparison here. We want to see it in a residential area that is like ours.
Yeah, it should be, it can't be in the middle of a former landfill or anything. I don't want to see 11-foot panels up at the old dump, I want to see them where they're in a field like this next to residential, that's, that's the marching orders.
And my last comment is, this is, this is, this is the last place that we have any hope, so I want, I want you to consider how valuable your feedback is going to be, your vote is going to be on this. Like I said, we have been with these meetings and this whole nonsense for the last four to five years, and every step we have felt like, oh, we lost it, we lost it. We have been losing this battle for many, many years now, and it seems like this is our last point. So appreciate any thoughtful consideration you can make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to add one of your comments, my, my guess is, why they're doing it in a field because it's the cheapest, no trees to cut, no dirt to put down, no grass to plant, that's, that's in a nutshell, I mean, that's, that's a nice, easy place to build, but, all right, who else?
Excuse me, I know it's late, I'll be quick, just to respond to some points that were made here by Kierzage, yeah, the whole community thing, we're the community thing, if the option for us now is, because I don't know where this comes from, but three-foot high panels and a fence where our kids aren't going to get electrocuted, or 15, I mean, just logic, right, 15 feet high with no fence, like, what community is going to pick option B there? I mean, it's, it's incredulous. Again, to hammer what Chairman Conroy said, they want to grow grass, they don't need to grow grass, it's a choice they're making, right? Again, the fence is a huge thing, this is a safety issue, it's, they mentioned something about, well, they don't fence, fence it off there now, well, there's trails out there and, hey, is my, is a kid going to get electrocuted walking on the trails there? I mean, I don't think so, I'm not an engineer or an electrician, but just, just a guess there. Mr. Smith, I would just say, and you had mentioned the comment that your hands are tied, I would say the, the planning board has a broad mandate here, again, public interest and welfare, I would, I would just suggest that you keep that in mind. Mr. O'Leary, just in response, I know we talked about the fire department and all that, again, what the, what the fire department told me is, these, these, the code hasn't really caught up to these things yet, right? He, he, he's not happy with the 100-foot buffer, he would say, yeah, it's a real, he told me it's a very realistic concern that the fire would spread to the Abutters. Again, they're stuck to the fire code, the board has a broader mandate here, I would just ask the, the board to keep that, to keep that all in mind. All right, thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Tapaska, I'm, I'm a resident of Walpole, but I don't even live in, in the neighborhood, but after hearing what's been going on here, just the, the injustice that is happening here has prompted me to get, get involved in this project. I want to comment on the agrivolt vultaecs, right, that term, agrivolt vultaecs. Hay needs full sun to, to grow, there's no guarantee that we're going to, that they're going to build these high solar panels and get hay, hay to produce. In research on agrivolt vultaecs, they say combining solar arrays with native plants and pollinator habitats or land for grazing livestock are the two of the most earliest agrivolt, agrivolt vultae practices to gain widespread currency, they remain the most common examples. So when you hear the term agrivolt vultaecs, it's growing crops that are tolerant with shade. If you, you can do a, a Google search, broccoli, vegetables, grazing sheep, those are the agrivolt vultaecs, there's no guarantee that you're going to build 15-foot solar panels and have gra, have hay grow there, and then, you know, if we don't have hay, then it's just a complete waste. In the, in the meetings that have occurred at the Aggie School, right, the pri, and I've, I've said this before in, in prior meetings, the primary reason for doing this is purely financial, the county has even said that in, in these meetings, purely financial. There's no, any, any research about growing grass or hay underneath panels is BS. So if you can take that into consideration, this neighborhood is taking the hit for the financial problems that the county is having, that's not right.
Yeah, no, I agree 100% that they didn't look for, well, we want to grow hay and this would be the best thing for us, oh yeah, and oh, by the way, we can do solar. No, it's always, we all know, follow the money.
That's it, thank you.
Sorry, I'd, I'd just like to respond to a couple of comments that were stated as fact. The growth of the hay under the panels, the design of the system is specifically related to the sun that's required to encourage and support crop growth, otherwise we would be planting this as you would see in a normal solar field with 10-foot rows. I want to point out that the normal solar fields have to be mowed two to three times a year to keep the grass down because the grass grows in amongst and up and over the panels. So the notion that, that, that grass doesn't grow around panels is not correct, in fact, it's, it's absolutely false. It's, it's a primary O and M requirement for all towns, and in fact, I'm sure that your code probably requires, you know, management of grasses on solar arrays as well. These are 28 feet apart, they are angled in an orientation with a tracking system to ensure solar access, and to the question regarding the, the research, I'm happy to have it quoted, but the, UMass Agricultural School along with the state conducted a lot of work on this, they came up with a standard that would be a, a standard that would ensure, they expect will ensure the ability for crops to grow, including hay, as part of the program, we have to do studies, measurements, and reporting every year, otherwise we have to shut it down. So the notion that we won't be carrying out research, the notion that this won't be part of a study and part of a program that requires measurement of growth in comparison to pre-existing growth rates is false, the program requires it. So we can't build it unless we do the scientific research associated with it and report to the state on an annual basis, the performance and the productivity of the haying.
Question before you go.
Yeah.
Is this a special type of grass, a blend or?
It's, it's a, it's a grass that was proposed, so the existing grass, the. So the existing grass, the Mass DOE are proposed some other varieties from an overseeding standpoint, if we need to overseed, that will respond to these types of growing conditions.
Okay, I guess a simple question is, if you were doing just a field, can you use the same grass under these or you're going to get a different type of blend so you're insured to get?
This is a hay field, we're using the grass that's on the field.
Okay, so it's not no special, you just, it's just going to grow?
No, the grasses are already hay varieties. That's because it's being used as a hay field, it's being cut as a hay field for the Aggie. It's a productive hay field, as it exists, and we're maintaining that.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right. So the next time, you're going to bring back some, or at least send it to us ahead of time if people ask where these are being done?
So you would like references of similar projects?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you have any pictures, whatever, the more you send to us, the more we can get it out.
Decibels.
What?
The decibels.
Oh, yeah, and you're also going to come back with the decibels.
With which, the decibels?
Yep. And naturally, it's 14 days, but you send it ahead of time, that way people can, we can give it to them. So what else do we have?
We want to get our tree board and maybe weigh in on the trees.
Yeah, have, go to Jim Thomas and have him weigh in on the trees.
Jim Thomas?
Yes, he will, so. And at least in my mind, I'll tell you right off the bat, you know, more space, but fence is definitely weighing on me. And if you could show us somehow that the neighbors, who I assume are the same ones that went and attended there, said, we want, we don't need a fence, that's fine, if you have that.
I'm happy to send the questions and answers that were raised in those meetings. They're posted on the website, so I'll go and dig those out and send them through.
Yeah, if you would, because I don't, I'm not digging if you can find those because it's been stated, you said one thing and the neighbors have said another, so let's kind of.
I think what I said was that we made changes in response to what we heard from the neighbors. I haven't said that the neighbors have overwhelmingly endorsed the project, but what I did say is.
Oh, I know they endorsed, but you did indicate the neighbors didn't want a fence so they could use.
The neighbors were concerned about a fence cutting off access to the hayride and cross-country trails.
Whatever you have. Gates work too, all right. How much time do you need to get all this together?
We could be at the next meeting. When do you need it in advance of the next meeting?
Two weeks, you're not going to, we need this stuff in ahead, so it would be the.
The one after that.
The one after, first meeting in May?
How far ahead of the meeting do you need the information?
There'll be missing a member, May 1st, just so that you know.
I want to work for the guy you work for.
I know.
I heard he's an easy.
He is, he's pretty easy, yeah.
All right, just so Paul won't be here at the first meeting in May, I don't know if that affects you, one way or another, if you want to keep going.
I guess, how far in advance of the meeting do you need the materials?
14 days.
A week?
14 days.
Oh, 14 days, okay. So we have to go to that next meeting?
Be aware of the board is changing its composition with the election on May 20th.
Yeah, okay, so we'll go May 1st.
Okay, is it May 1st or is it the first meeting in May?
May 1st is the first meeting.
Do we need an extension?
Without Paul, yep.
Hey, can you give us an extension through?
Mid-May.
Just to have it.
May 31st.
May 15th, sure.
What's it due to end of May, May 31st?
Oh, I thought he said the first of May.
No, I want the end of May, just to have the extension.
The extension till May 31st, right?
Can we take it through mid-May or rather have the extension? Because there's going to be an election and a change of the board apparently, so.
No, this only, this doesn't affect you, you're going to be on May 1st. We just get it just in case something happens. Used to be worse in the winter when we would have snow.
And the election's June.
Are the elections in June?
June, May 20th. Oh, it's May 20th?
May 20th.
They moved it up there.
Yeah, so I go off the board on May 20th, that's why I want to make sure.
I thought it was the first Tuesday in June.
But this, but here's the thing, it's May 1st and there's May 15th.
May 15th, yeah.
There's two meetings before that election happens, so there's two chances.
So can we get a continuation to, then to, no, continuation, extend it out to the May 16th so we've got the two meetings to deal with it?
Yeah, but if you just give it to us then, that doesn't affect. You can have May 1st meeting, but just give an extension through.
All right, sure.
All right.
So through May, what date are we extending through?
The end of May, May 31st.
I think he's afraid we're going to wait till then, that's.
No, no, you're just giving the extension to May 31st and we're going to slate you in, knowing that I'm going to be also, there'll be four people on the May 1st meeting.
One has nothing to do with the other, we like to go a little bit beyond.
And hopefully this could be, you know, should not go on after.
Make a motion to allow the applicant up through May, what is it, 31st?
Yeah.
Second.
May 32nd?
He's second in the room.
Maybe he's second, okay, all in favor? Aye. And then May 1st, is that the date?
Yeah, it's 7:10.
Wonderful, 7:10, okay. You got a question before we go?
I want to show you something, if I could. A few years ago, I was at a farm in Pontyverma, and they had solar panels on the farm. They were used for grazing. You want to see an example of what a solar panel would look like grazing? This is what I saw, I can show you here.
Yeah, we're almost done.
Yeah, that is. You can go here, you can go to that, and you can see over here, it's being used for grazing. But that's what the panels look like. This is a typical panel, single.
Yep. See, that's the stuff we wanted to see.
Right, but imagine 200 of these.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Connected in a row, several hundred feet, several of those rows. That's what they're looking for.
Could you ask, could you show that to them, say, is it similar panels? So is that similar, those type of panels, not necessarily the?
ASCA.
No?
I think those are much bigger.
Oh, okay. Yes, you know what, he was here before, yes.
These are free access trackers and on individual posts, they're not going to be able to. Spacing between them is closer than the 28 feet we have. I can provide you with.
Yeah, that's what we want to see, what it looks like, that's what we're just trying to get. Okay, we will continue this meeting until May 1st at 7:10. Good job.
When they give you the examples in advance, can we see that too before we come to the meeting?
Yeah, that's why I want them to get it here, so everybody gets to see them ahead of time.
Okay, how will we see that?
When they send them to you, as long as they do it, oh, where'd he go? Oh, he's right there. When you send them to, if you're sending all this stuff to us, can you put it also in a PDF so if they want to get it ahead of time, they have plenty of time to see it? We can email it. If you do that, that'd be help things move along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I guess that's it, okay. Second, all in favor? Aye.
So can I just tell you?